And, okay. And this is the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals. And a couple of things that I forgot to talk about last time, but if you would like to speak, you can, or be heard, you can raise your hand. And raising your hand is on the bottom of your screen or on your, where's my tips? In your computer, it's touched the, in your smartphone, it's touched the bottom of your screen and select more and hit raise hand. On the computer, if you hit the participants button, you can hit raise hand on the bottom of the participants panel. And also, if you're speaking, if you could identify yourself clearly for the tape, that will help Chris a lot as she tries to get the notes straight. So, I think those are the only two things. And I'm going to call the first case. And the first case is 2103 Jan Renee Shields Trustee, application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.21 for an affordable accessory dwelling. And the board for this will be Mick, Manny, Trevor, Will, and myself. And Ms. Shields, you have the floor to explain what you would like to do, wherever she is. Hello? She was here a minute ago. I thought she was, I thought I saw the...
I don't know if she's muted or not.
Yeah, she's muted.
Okay. Jan Renee, you need to unmute yourself. There you go.
I've never done this before, so I'm not sure.
Looks like you're doing fine. So, identify yourself for Chris and then tell us about your project.
My name is Jan Renee Shields, formerly Harding, of 25 Harding Lane. I have this project going, I think the building started in 1994. My sister and I put in for a dwelling unit in 2004, which was not possible because it would not be affordable. So, it was withdrawn without prejudice. And I have completed the project with all permits. And I'm delayed because I was told I had to get an occupancy permit first, which is not the case. Now, I've gone through all the steps with the zoning board. And I'm applying for an affordable dwelling unit.
Okay. Very good. Okay. And so, I'll start with the board's questions. Do I have any letters? Chris, do we have any letters on this project?
No.
No. And is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this project? I'm not seeing any hands. All right. I will go to the board in that case. So, Mick.
Let's hear from Manny first.
Okay. Manny.
Why me, mate? I just had one question for the honor. On the plan, I can see where there's a planned porch. And I just wanted to know if that, if we were giving a permit for that? If that was included in the permit?
It was included in the permit, but at this time, I don't have the money to do it and I probably won't. I'm not going to say that I won't in the future, but it's not in the affordable housing right now.
Okay. Otherwise, I don't have any other questions on this. Seems like the right thing to do.
Okay. Nick?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. I think it's the right thing to do considering the grim state of housing for people, working class people in this town. So, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Will?
Yeah, my only question is on the plan. I'm assuming that the unit you're looking for approval on is the unfinished dwelling that is shown on the plan?
Well, it's been unfinished, but it's been finished except for the final, you know, final electrical and plumbing that had to be done.
Okay. No, but I'd say, is that the unit you're looking for the approval on?
Yes, it was called a studio because that's what Mr. Asman decided one day that it should be called when we went to find a name for it.
Okay. No, that's fine. Then I've got no further questions.
Okay. And Trevor?
I have no question.
Dan?
I guess I just want to be clear in the findings that we're not approving a porch because we would have to, she would need a special permit for that in the future, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So, why would I need a special permit if it's already, it's part of the plan and the footers are in? The original plan that was approved had a porch. I just can't afford to do it.
Not sure.
In the building permit that you got, was that included?
Yes.
And how many years ago was that?
Oh.
So, that was a few years ago.
Yeah, it's been, the building was started, I think, in 94 when I put in the foundation and...
That's right.
It's been used for a lot of different things since then and...
So, in other words, it has been an ongoing project?
Yes. I got married and moved to Kentucky in 2004 and it sat. And I finally decided after my sister passed it, I needed to do something or it was just going to waste away and cost me more money.
So, the question is, can you still do this by right?
Do what? The porch? Well, I mean, it was approved. I don't know if I'm going to do it. It's not something I want to do tomorrow. I can't afford to. But it was part of the plan.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, maybe if I could jump in, you know, if you get a permit from the Board of Appeals and you commence any aspect of the work, then your grandfather to continue that, the rest of that work whenever you want. There's no time limit. You just have to commence the work within the two-year period of the grant of the permit.
Okay. You don't have to finish it. So, the fact that she already...
No, I believe, yeah.
The fact that she already had a permit for the...
Porch.
For the porch before, when the house was built, means that that continues.
Exactly.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I think I would agree with that, too. And I don't have to mention it one way or another in the findings. Okay. Where am I? Andy, do you have, you're muted.
I apologize for being a few minutes late.
It's okay.
I'm in favor of this. I think we do need more affordable housing and even though the AA, the use are tough to operate in terms of the regulations, I think it's admirable. That's the goal of this petition.
Okay. All right. All right. So, do I have a motion to go to findings?
I will make a motion to go to findings.
Do I, Mick makes the motion and do I have a second?
Second.
Manny, seconds. Okay, this is what I have.
We need to do a full vote.
Oh, yeah. We have to vote to go to findings. You're right. Okay. Will?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And Sharon, yes. Thank you, Chris. Okay. And I apologize, this, special permits for affordable accessory dwelling units have a lot of conditions at the end of it, so bear with me while I deal with that. But right now, I'm just going on the findings. This is an application for an affordable accessory dwelling unit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.21. The applicant proposes to convert an existing unfinished two-story, one-bedroom unit into an AADU. The livable floor area of the proposed affordable accessory dwelling unit is approximately 1,056 square feet. The board has made inspection of this subject lot. There were no appearances for or against the application. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that nearby land uses will not be damaged by the proposed AADU, that the roads and drainage and other public services are adequate in relation to the location of the proposed AADU, that the proposed AADU will contribute to the diversity of affordable housing opportunities locally, that there are no seasonal consequences to the proposal, that scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated, that the visibility of parking is minimized, and that no traditional public access to or along the shoreline has been affected. After considering the district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2, the purpose of Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.2.1 of promoting the development of affordable rental housing in Wellfleet for your own residence and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. Did I leave anything out?
Sounds good to me.
Yes, sounds good to me.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the findings?
I will make a motion to accept the findings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Will?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
And Sharon, yes. Okay. Then I need a motion to grant the special permit subject to the conditions.
I will make a motion to grant the special permit subject to conditions.
Do I have a second? Okay. Now, do I read the conditions now before we...
I think we need to do the full vote again.
Before I go to the conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, no, you don't.
No.
You don't, sorry.
Okay. So, here's the thing, that there are standard conditions for affordable accessory dwelling units in accordance with well, section 6.21. And Will, I mean, and Bruce always read them. Do you want me to read them?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Bruce, Bruce, Bruce always did a wonderful job. He was a bit long-winded with his findings.
Well, these are right out of the zoning bylaw.
In my humble opinion.
But I heard one yes, so I'm going with it. Get ready. All right. The special permit conditions that follow shall be deemed an affordable housing deed restriction in a form satisfactory to the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section 6.21.2 of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw. Failure to comply with any of these provisions shall be considered a violation of special permit requirements and may be subject to fines established in section 8.3 of the zoning bylaw and/or to enforcement requiring removal of the unit. All occupants of the affordable accessory dwelling unit described herein shall upon an initial application and annually thereafter on the 1st of September submit to the town or its agent documentation to confirm their eligibility for the dwelling unit. All dwelling units must be rented to those meeting established guidelines for low or moderate income families. For the purpose of this section of the bylaw, low-income families shall have an income less than 80% of the town of Wellfleet median family income, and moderate-income families shall have an income between 80% and 120% of the town of Wellfleet median family income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, published income guidelines as may from time to time be amended. Maximum rents for the affordable accessory dwelling unit described herein shall be established in accordance with HUD published fair market rental guidelines. Property owners are required to submit to the town or its agent information on the rent to be charged. Each year thereafter, on the 1st of September, they shall submit information on annual rents charged to the town or its agent on forms provided for this purpose. Rents may be adjusted annually in accordance with amendments to the HUD Fair Market Rental Guidelines. Property owner named herein shall complete and submit to the building inspector an application for a building permit to allow a change in use. The septic system is required to meet current Title V standards and shall be reviewed and approved by the health agent. The inspector of buildings and health agent shall inspect the premises for compliance with public safety and public health codes. The property owner named herein shall obtain a certificate of occupancy from the building inspector prior to the affordable accessory dwelling unit being occupied. The affordable accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated by ownership from the principal dwelling unit or principal structure. And the lot containing an affordable accessory dwelling unit shall be subject to a recorded restriction that shall restrict the lot owner's ability to convey interest in the affordable accessory dwelling unit except leasehold estates for the term of the restriction. That's it.
Nicely done, Sharon.
Do I have a motion to grant the permit based, including the conditions?
We just need to do the five votes now, I think.
Yes, okay. I don't need a motion. All right. Good. Will?
Aye.
Manny?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Sharon? Yes. Okay. All right. Congratulations. Ms. Shields, Christine can walk you through what paperwork you will get from her and when, if you will need to contact her. Ordinarily, we would hand you something, but right now, can't hand you anything, so this is what it is.
I will, I'll send Renee an email.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. And I will send you those findings by email.
Thank you.
Okay. And I always do this.
Thank you.
You are welcome. All right. I'm going to call Ben. I'm going to ask you to deal with the Starboard Tac one first, if you would. And I'm trying to find my agenda to figure out what the number is.
The last one. The last one.
Yeah, I know. I know. There it is, yes. 2007, Starboard Tac Holdings.
Thank you, Sharon. Again, this is...
And oh, the board for that one is, the board for that one is Will, Rhita, Trevor, Janet, and Andy.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This, again, this is Ben Zunder. I'm on the line representing Starboard Tac Holdings, which is Thorbaum and Maya Beck. And, you know, after looking, you know, at what was involved to try to get this permit at the last hearing, my clients realized that it probably wasn't going to be a successful permit activity. So, they've instructed me to request that this board consider allowing us to withdraw this application without prejudice. And I hope you will vote to grant that. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion from one, someone on that board to grant that? Whoever moves it, second?
Second.
Janet, seconds. All in favor. Will?
Aye.
Rhita? Rhita?
Aye.
Trevor?
Yes.
Janet?
Aye.
And Andy?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And just by way of commentary on that, Sharon, if you'll beg my indulgence, I want to thank the board. That was a difficult hearing. It took a long time. I begged your indulgence throughout the process and I put you in what I consider to be a fairly difficult position throughout that, trying to work, find that permit. And so, I know I put a lot of stress on this board and I thank you all for your grace in hearing that matter all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right. And we'll go back on to the agenda as it's printed here with 2101 Jeffrey Stefani, 640 Chiqueset Neck Road. Map 19, map partial 80, application for a special permit to alter a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the R1 district by constructing additions on the north and west sides of the dwelling. And the board for this one will be Mick, Manny, Will, Trevor, and Jan. And I will chair, but not serve on the board.
Okay, through the chair, if I may.
Certainly.
Okay, again, it's Ben Zunder and I'm here on behalf of Jeff, Jeffrey Stefani and his wife, Mihai Kim Stefani. And you may or may not know this, but Jeffrey is the, is the son of Elder Stefani and Robert Hanky, who we all know well, Robert was on this board for many, many years. And Robert was famous for his statement that this board should never grant a variance, which I didn't always agree with. But this project, I think this project is interesting. I think it's beautiful. I'm very excited to be able to present this to you. As you're aware, this property at 640 Chiqueset Neck Road is part of the colony, which is a, which was a grouping of cottages designed by Morton and Salt and Stahl. Beautiful structures. Eleanor and Robert did a wonderful job of maintaining the architectural integrity of the colony. And now that it's passed Jeffrey and Mihai, they're really doing their best to maintain this architectural integrity and also make the property work for them, you know, both physically and financially. So, what they've done is they've, they've, they've gone through the planning process to enlarge the lot that this house is on. This property is, is a lot that was separated out from the colony proper many, many years ago. But what they need to do is to make this house work for them, both in terms of size and design. So, they engaged Sabell, who's on the line, to, to design additions to this house that would allow them to live in it and also to maintain that integrity, architectural integrity of the structure. As the board knows from our presentation, this, this project has been before the Wellfleet Historical Committee, who has, has approved the, the design. And the design is essentially to take the west side of the existing single-story structure, which has a block wall, which when you look at it from the road, appears to be really part of the building itself, but it's really, it closes a patio, has a pergola over it. And then Sabell has designed a, you know, a two-story structure which fits in this location. It's non-conforming on the west side, being 8.6 feet from the, from the, from that west side. And it's, and it's going closer, it's going closer to about 0.3 feet. That's the overhang distance. The structure stepped back a little bit, but that side of the property is also part of the colony proper. So, it's not going to be encroaching upon lands owned by others at this point. You know, I like the design personally. I know that shouldn't matter to this board, but I think that they've done a wonderful job in locating this, this addition in juxtaposition of the original part of the structure in such a way that it respects architectural integrity, the lines flow. And, and this is really the only way that you could do it. And this is the only place that you could do it on this lot and in connection with this particular structure. And so, I'm hoping the board sees fit to granting a special permit. And I'm hoping that if you have questions about the design program itself, that Sabell can, can address those for you. And thank you all.
Okay. And Chris, do we have letters on this one?
No.
Okay. And is there anyone in the audience who has come to speak to this? See, I have no hands. Deciding, okay. All right. So, I will start the board's questions with Nick.
Go to Manny first, please.
Okay. Go to Manny first, yes.
Well, I just, I just have a question on why this addition couldn't go more towards the back of the house? Is it because of the topography or instead of encroaching onto the lot line? If somebody can answer that question, maybe Sabell?
Sure, I would be glad to answer that question. So, in terms of locating the addition, we looked at several areas. We looked at the opposite end of the property and we didn't want to really take anything away from the integrity of the architecture. So, that was a big thing for us, especially from the street side. In terms of the topography, as you probably have seen the property, whether in the past or recently, it does drop down significantly in the back. There's a beautiful garden in the back. So, we wanted to preserve the garden. We didn't want to put it, you know, so far away from the house that it was kind of a standalone. So, what we did is that we wanted to touch the existing structure as small as possible at the rear of the property. So, the connection is such that you actually do, it's pushed back as much as possible. So, it only really touches the building in a very small portion towards the garden side and then the addition. So, anything else, we couldn't have put this any farther back unless we did like a narrow tunnel or something that connected to the existing building and then went into the addition. So, we actually pushed it as far back as possible. And plus, you could see that there are two other structures there. There's a shed and a greenhouse, which could be moved. We looked into that as well to see if we could move it, which we could do, but it didn't really help us out with making the house, the addition as small as possible. We felt that this was really the best because it's set back from the street quite a lot and it touches the existing in a very small corner.
Does that answer your question, Manny?
Yes.
Did you have other questions or?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess I'm having a difficult time with how close this proposed addition gets to that west side property line. I realize that the property that surrounds it is owned, is it the same ownership or the same family anyway? But the fact that it remains, it's still a separate, still a separate parcel. And the existing, you know, Ben mentioned that it's currently 8.6 feet. That's to the end of the block wall. The actual building itself is, is 26 feet off the property line as it exists now. And we'd be bringing that down to less than a foot. So, I don't know. I'm not sure how I, I completely sympathize with Sabell's argument. Fellow architect, I totally understand what she's saying, but this makes me a little uncomfortable with how close it gets to that property line.
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
Well, I totally understand what you're saying, Trevor. It was, you know, we looked at perhaps making this parcel even larger, but the fact that there's that other cottage so close to it.
Yep.
And it was either, you know, trying to make the corner to the existing cottage going against zoning, so which is 25.5 feet to there, or it would have been one or the other. And Stefani's chose to really keep it more in keeping with the zoning bylaws to that existing cottage. And then the other thing is, if we were to have pushed it more towards the opposite side, then the back of the existing structure would have been really altered more. And we didn't really want to touch the existing structure so much because it was taking away from the integrity of it.
Yeah.
It was all like a balance, which one is the one that really respects the architecture, the existing architecture? And to me, too, knowing Robert for so long and, you know, also Eleanor, this is, I'm proud to actually work on this project and I know how Eleanor loved this property. So, I always thought about how she would, if she were alive. So, and then like you're saying, the other property is also under the same ownership. So, it's a balance.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to add a couple of points, if you don't mind. First of all, to address Trevor's point about the house being 26 feet away, the block wall, if the board, if the board has seen the structure, it really is part of the structure. The block wall, you know, if this were being built today, the structural setback, the structure would be the block wall. It wouldn't be that the house itself, because it's part of, it's part of a continuous structure. So, we're, we're really talking about moving the structure roughly 8.2 feet closer to the sideline. But, but of course, we're adding some math to it. But the structure itself, you know, the addition that's being put on is really only, it's 26'8" by, by 19 feet. It's not a big addition, but it's taller. And to move it to any other part of the lot behind the house, what you're doing is you're, it would be looming over the existing. what you're doing is it would be looming over the existing architecture that was designed, which means it would, and part of this is that you want to respect that architecture. If you put it behind there, really the visual aspect becomes the existing house as modified by something that's looking over it. And so it's as much a visual thing. And I, the problem that I have, and I think the problem this board might have is, this board deals in numbers. You know, it deals in distances to setback lines, lot coverage numbers, height numbers. But those systems that you work under don't lend themselves to problem solving when it comes to aesthetics. And so I think in this particular case, it would be very difficult to try to put this addition somewhere else relative to this existing structure. And so that's where we think, although we are going closer to that sideline, and it's like .3 feet, and that's the overhang, but still, that's close. It's very close. But we think in this particular case, because of those considerations, it's something that we hope the board is okay with, I guess is the best term.
Now, Nick.
I walked this property today. And while I agree, it's beautiful architecturally. The reason I didn't want to go first is I really struggle with putting a building so close to the lot line regardless of whether they used to own it. They don't own it anymore. It belongs to a different entity. And it's funny that it was Bob Hanky's building because if this was another building and Bob was on the board, he wouldn't agree to it regardless. I'm just struggling going so close to the lot line. So the overhang is .3 feet from the lot line. And the building, we have a two-foot to the edge of lot line. And I don't see a way that I can agree to this, approving this. Like, I'm really struggling with it. When I left there, I was thinking, I don't, I wanted to go last to see if somebody could find a solution that I would agree with. Right now, it's too close to the lot line for my liking.
Thanks. Will?
Yeah, I mean, my concern with the lot line is, you know, I can see architecturally why it needs to be there. But, I mean, I assume there's some houses in town that are on undersized lots and they're on an undersized lot. So they just can't build an addition. You know, I mean, they don't have a constitutional right to an addition. And boy, we've held people's feet to the fire. I think of some of the lots we've seen, oh, you know, over the past couple of years that I've been on the board. And they're little bitty things that were created many decades ago. And I'm sure lots of those people would want to come in and say, gee, I got this little lot and I got this house is way too small for me and I can't do anything with it. And my response is, well, buy another house. I mean, just you don't have a right to expand if you can't comply with the zoning. So anyway, that's my comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to, and look, I'm listening very carefully to the board's comments. But look, the standard here isn't, the standard before the board is whether this alteration is substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. You know, the existing structure is, you know, is 8.6 feet off that lot line on that block wall. It is what it is architecturally. The use of this structure is not changing in any way, shape, or form. It's still going to be a residential structure used by Jeffrey and Mihai. It allows them to live here year-round and continue. And just so you know, they are selling some of the properties off to try to maintain the financial viability of this property. And those properties also are, you know, maintaining architectural integrity. But the standard really is, is it going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood when it's constructed? It's not whether it's closer to the lot line, although that's something you consider. And, you know, I have to say, looking at the structure, you know, we can disagree or differ as to whether we think it's attractive or not attractive. And we can even disagree as to whether it's too close to a lot line or not too close. But the fact is that it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure that is entitled to be considered for a special permit. And this extension of that non-conformity from 8.6 feet to .3 feet is something that can be approved if the board finds it's not substantially more detrimental. And I would like to hear the board talk about whether they think this construction is going to be more detrimental or substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't think it is, but I get paid not to think that so, or to think that it's not so. So thank you. And I'm just trying to sort of redirect the thought process a little bit.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sharon, thank you. I hadn't considered that. I now will.
Thanks, thanks, Will. And Jan?
I, too, have some reservations about how close this is to the lot line. I appreciate what Ben just said, though. But I do want to say, Sabell, it's a beautiful design and very respectful to the original architecture. I have a couple of just picky questions through you, Sharon, for Ben.
Sure.
So I listened to the planning board hearing for the approval not required for these lots. And it's really unclear to me what happened. Have these lots been combined? They said something about coming back to them for an 81X. I just want to understand what's going on. Is there another, are they actually combined at this point?
What I understand is, and again, I wasn't at those hearings, Jan, so I don't know. I thought that the planning board had had some questions, but approved the plan. But because this is registered land, it then has to go to the land court for the creation of a new plan that's then generated by the land court to be reported, to be registered at the registered district locally. So there's a process that still has to be completed. With land court land, you have to go to the planning board first, get that approval not required plan endorsed, and then it goes to land court. I don't, I'm not sure what the grounds for refusal to endorse the plan would be by the planning board anyways, because we're not creating new buildable lots. Now, I have to say.
But they did endorse it, but they said something about they wanted, there was a representative there from Felco. They wanted it to come back with an 81X. I guess I'm just thinking, do we need to condition? I don't know where we're going with this. But when we get, if we get findings at some point, do we have to condition it on some further approval from the planning board?
I believe that this board, if it does see fit to grant a special permit, should condition it upon the approval not required plan being completed and approved by the land court. Now, you know, the land court will look at this and they'll issue a preliminary approval. So we could certainly condition upon the A&R plan being completed. The other thing that I can suggest is that, look, it is possible for the applicant to go back and do a different division plan that moves that land further away from the structure. You know, they could go back to the planning board, revise their A&R plan, have it reendorsed and go back to the land court. And for example, change that lot line in some way between the cottage to the west. But I think the board needs to understand that if you do change that lot line, let's say you move it so that lot was a little closer to the cottage to the west. And let's say you're 8, 10, 12 feet off of this lot line. It's not going to change the visual relationship between the buildings in any way, shape, or form to the people that are looking at this property from the street or from the outside. Nobody sees the lot line. So we could do it. It would cost them more money and time. And it may create a lesser sideline setback from the cottage that may have to be addressed by this board. But it wouldn't change the visual relationship, you know, the structure to the structure next door in any way. So.
Through you again, Ben, so you know where we're going with this. If we ever do get to findings on this, I've been asked to draft them. So I want to make sure I know all the facts.
Understood.
Give you some picky questions. I have one more picky question for you for that reason, okay? In your application and in your narrative, you list the zoning regulations that are applicable. And I think one is in error and I was going to leave.
It could well be, Jan, it very well, it very easily could be.
It's 6.1.5.2B.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, not B, just 6.1.5.2. If I read that, that only applies to conforming houses on not conforming lots. And this is already not a conforming.
That could be an error in our drafting.
So I'm going to, if we ever do go to findings, I'm going to take that out. Okay.
Please, thank you. I'm looking it up.
And same thing, distance from setback really should be 8.6 feet, not, on Sabell's plan, it's 26.7. But you're saying we really need to count that wall.
I think, through you, Madam Chair. I think we have to because, you know, that's a block concrete wall that's attached to the structure. I think that that would be considered to be a structure that have to comply with setback or corner. So I think that box on the Ryder-Wilcox plan that has it at 26.7 existing is incorrect. It's 8'6". And the 8'6" is shown on the plan.
Yep. Okay, that's the end of my question. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to Rita and to Andy. Rita?
This is an amazing structure. And I feel it does not substantially change the, you know, the, as it, does hear it. Does not basically change the situation with the, with the house. I think it should be upset.
Okay. Andy?
You know, it's always an interesting question. You know, that the standard that Ben has set forth, which of course is going to be one that we'll currently be dealing with later on tonight. And I guess I have to say, no, the answer is no. It's not going to substantially affect. Depends on what you consider the neighborhood, you know? Is it the rest of the colony? Is it that area of Chauqueste Neck Road? What is it? And so I go with it's that area, it's both. And so therefore, I don't think it will. I'm in support of this, even though I'm not voting.
Okay, thank you. Ben, I had a question for you. The cottage that we're going to, the side we're encroaching on.
Yes.
Who lives in that cottage? Who owns that cottage?
It's owned by the Colony of Waffleit, Inc., which is owned by Jeffrey and Mihai.
Right.
So it's, and I wish I knew more about what they actually do with it, whether they rent it out. I believe there are seasonal structures that are used, you know? I believe they're rented. They're not owned. There are two structures on the right-hand side of the property across from Way 55, you know, one of which was just conveyed out. It was in a separate lot. So there's, and then there's two others on the other side of Way 55. But I believe that they're all used as part of the colony as a single entity and they're controlled, known by Jeffrey and Mihai.
Okay, so essentially, they are encroaching on themselves.
They are.
I could confirm what Ben was saying.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes, please, Sabell.
They do rent it in the summer. So the history of the colony continues with the way that it's being used. What they do is it's just summer rentals. And they have an incredible, very long list of people who have used these cottages in the summer. Some of them are really well-known people, writers. They would, if Jeffrey is here, he could give you the list. So that's what they do. It's just summer rentals.
Okay. And this one is not, there isn't a plan to convey this one out as a sale?
No, the plan here is for Jeffrey and Mihai to use this as their residence.
No, I don't mean the residents. I mean that cottage that they're encroaching on. If they're going to split up the colony and sell the houses, you know, is this one one of the ones that's going to be sold?
Sharon, I can't tell you that they won't try to, for example, create a condominium and sell the units. But the plan here is that if they do something along those lines, there would be very, very strict regulations on the continued use and architectural integrity of a colony as a whole. Meaning, they want to make sure that the colony doesn't change its architectural relationship of the structures to each other and how they're used. So I can't tell you that they're, and I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not hedging because I know something's going to happen. I just don't know. But every one of the structures in this, in this piece of land is subject to strict review by the Historical Commission. And more importantly, it's subject to both, you know, Jeffrey's taking on of Eleanor and Robert's really strict insistence that these structures be preserved. So if this does get approved, that it moves closer to that structure, then, you know, if somebody were to come in at some point, let's say it were converted to a condo a number of years down the road, they would know exactly what they were getting into at that point. So.
All right. Okay. So where are we, gentlemen, ladies? Manny, further thoughts?
Well, I'm trying to visualize the addition versus versus that block wall that was built around there. And if it, I'm still having a problem with it being right on the line. I think there could be changes that could push it off of that line, the lot line. So I'm still not sure which way to go here.
Okay. Trevor?
I'm more convinced than I was at the beginning of this. But I'm still, I'm still a little uneasy about it.
All right. Nick?
Yeah, I'm the same. I'm still not convinced. I know it's a beautiful project. I love the architecture. I love everything about it. But since I've been a member of the board, we have never, in my memory, except for one time where we allowed the people on the pier go to 100% lot coverage. But other than that, we've never approved a project so close to the lot line. And I'm really having a difficult time with that. Regardless of how nice all the drawings are and the architecture and so on, we just have never done that before. And then to the question of people, we've had people come in front of the board that have bought in October and came in front of, or bought in May and came in front of us in October. And there's been a lot of times we've turned them down where they wanted to go within 10 feet of lot line, but it was non-conforming. And normally, if you have a lot that you can build this without coming in front of the board, that's what we've always encouraged in the past. And to create such a non-conformity, I'm really struggling with it. Right now, I'm leaning towards a no on it. I just think it's too close to the lot line. That's my 10 cents.
Will?
No, I've changed my tune, listening to what Ben said, that we need, if we can find that there's basically no harm at all. And I just don't see the harms. So I'm in favor of this application.
Jan?
Oh, boy. I see everybody's point of view very clearly. No, I don't think there's harm. However, I see Manny and Nick's point as well. This is right on the lot line. And Trevor, Trevor. I'm right where Trevor is. I'm conflicted.
Is there, is there any way? Go ahead, Manny. Go ahead, Manny.
That's the word I was looking for, conflicted.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Well, to me, the way the house looks right now, the wall looks like part of the house.
Yep.
So to me, something that goes out as far as that wall doesn't change anything about the neighborhood. I mean, it makes it bigger on the top. But I think the design takes care of that. I think it's when we go past that wall and we don't have much property there to deal with, that we run into trouble. Does that make any sense?
It does. To me, it does.
Yeah, me too.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, you know, I'm finding this hearing very, very interesting, extremely interesting because it's just, it's one of those, it's one of those hearings where I'm listening to the board work with absolute sincerity on trying to understand and see what it is about this project that works and doesn't work. I always say to people, not members of the board, but I always tell people that I can drive around Waffleit or other towns, and I can point out projects that a Board of Appeals or a planning and I can point out projects that, that a Board of Appeals were planning what it was involved in, because there are design elements that just, you know, my father used to say, you know, an, an elephant is a horse designed by committee. This is, this is not, this is not the project where we wanna design this house around zoning requirements. And by that, I mean, you know, we don't wanna try to push this house five feet further away from the lot line. You know, in a round, for example, behind the existing structure architecturally. We don't wanna do that because of the way it changes the relationship of the addition to the, to the, to the existing house. So, and, and, and obviously if this is not an approvable project, you know, at the end of this hearing, you know, we'll ask for a continuous, we'll go back and look at ways to resolve this. I, I feel like the better resolution is to move the lot line rather than to redesign the house, you know, to, I, 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 I really don't like what I call artificial, artificial influences on design, you know, and that's maybe the way that I approach architecture because of my family history. If, if this board, if four members of this board were able to find that it's not substantially more detrimental, can approve it, we would be thrilled. I would be thrilled. If this board feels that it wants to try to, for example, you know, shift that new addition in relation to the existing structure, that's the thing I think it's about. And Jeffrey would have to take a really, really hard look at, and would also have to go back to historic and, and have the, you know, the, the opinion of those members as influenced by, you know, their board advisor. So I, I really appreciate what the board's doing right now. I think you're doing a great job. I would love to see a way to find four votes on this. If not, I think we would have to really go back and think very, very long and hard about, you know, making architectural change to what's being presented. So.
If I may, Sharon?
Yes, yes, Sibel.
I totally agree with what Ben said. The architecture really does try very hard to respect the existing on all four sides, not just, you know, the front and the other side on the way 22 area. So Ben is absolutely right that if the board could possibly agree with us in that the architecture is as small as, you know, we could get it, as respecting of the existing as possible, then the alternative would be to try to move the new lot line like Ben suggested, a little bit farther away from the footprint that we're presenting to you.
Can I just ask you one question about? Why couldn't the major part of that building be pushed over where the patio is? Well, so that would take, that would take the corner away from the lot line. I don't know how many feet that is.
Well, right now as it is, the, what we wanted is, so if you look at the back of the building, from the corner of the existing house to the corner of the addition is seven feet. So that's pretty narrow as it is. And then we have the addition start from there. So if I were to push it closer to the existing house, it would be like, say another six inches, maybe a foot at most. So it's really, what I wanted to create was between the existing house and the new structure that I create like this glass by transparent area. And seven feet, I thought is as close as we could really get it by having a six-foot wide, you know, slider in there. So in other words, perhaps it could be moved six inches or something, but nothing that much that's wrong to commit.
No, not six inches.
If, if I may, Sharon?
Yes.
Really what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a visual separation so that when you look at this from the street, you're seeing the existing house sitting as an existing organic structure. And then this structure sits to the side and stepped back so that you can, you can differentiate the two structures. You know, i- if you move it closer, it pushes in behind the original structure and then it becomes, they become, it becomes one monolithic structure that doesn't have that architectural integrity that the existing crusher has. So, you know, again, what happens is the tail begins to weigh the dog architecturally, and the tail being the zoning bylaws and the, and the dog being, you know, obviously the, the, the architecture of Salt and Stoll when he designed this house.
Trevor?
I, I'd just like to point out that we're the, we are the zoning board of appeals, not the architectural review.
Yeah, I agree. Trevor, I agree. I, I don't question that.
Sharon?
Yes, Will.
Yeah, yeah, the more I, I think of it also, I, you know, I'm sort of change, changing my tune. You know, I mean, I suppose we could also say the, the, the difference between this structure that we're looking at and most everything else is most of the houses, you know, like my own, it's a perfectly fine house, but there's nothing very special about it. Where, where, where this particular one has, you know, some very unique characteristics. And if you can change the, the lot line and make it comply, but it won't really change anything in the scheme, the scheme of things. What's the harm in, in, in approving the plan as, as drafted? Just a thought.
Okay, alright, thanks. Jan or Mick, did you have?
If I may.
Yeah.
Again, we're talking about this is a beautiful structure. Nobody's disagreeing with that. With the zoning board of appeals, we don't, we don't rule on whether something's nice looking or not nice looking. We're, we're being asked to go really close to the lot line. If you wanna move the lot line, but go, by all means, go ahead and move the lot line. And then I'd probably be in, in agreement, but I'm still, as Manny's, very, very conflicted with where it's going. And just because it's a beautiful building doesn't, doesn't mean that we, that it's, it's entitled to a permit. It's not. We've had other people come with nice drawings or whatever. And we have never taken the fact that it's a beautiful building into account as regards ruling on a, on a special tenant. And I do, don't get me wrong, I do look, the, the architecture is very, very unique for where it is in the town. But I'm still conflicted with it being close. Haven't, that's just my, how I feel about it being on the board. And have turned down so many people that have wanted two or three feet and we wouldn't grant it. And so I don't think, if we're gonna be fair, just because it's nice, does that mean we disregard the laws about how close it is to the lot line? That's my feeling.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And, and I'm directing this at you, Mick, just, just, you know, it's, it's so rare that you and I actually have this discussion and I appreciate it. You know, when the board talks about whether something is substantially more detrimental, what you're talking about is the effect that it has on, on the neighborhood, because what you're really doing is you're protecting the community. You know, you're protecting the community from, from, from issues of, of traffic and safety and, and massing, you know, visually, all of those things. That's what you're doing is you're protecting the neighborhood. You're representing the community. So when you look at this structure and you, and you, and you determine whether it's substantially more detrimental than existing structure and its effect on the neighborhood, you're not seeing the lot line between this and the other property. You, you see the structures and the relationship of those structures to the road and to each other. So if this board, you know, adheres to a technical view of the zoning code, says like, you know, because it's X number of feet from the lot line, we can't approve it. But if you come back and, and they spend three months and $8,000 moving that lot line, and, and then you say, okay, we can now approve it because it's six and a half feet from the lot line, or seven or eight or 10 feet from the lot line, there's no difference in all the things that you're really looking at. How big is it? How imposing is it? You know? What effect does it have in terms of the use of the structure, the noise, the, the traffic, all those things? What you're doing is you're really, you're adopting, you know, what I would call a technocratic view of the zoning bylaw. Instead of looking at this particular structure in this particular site and saying, on this site, yes, it's gonna be .3 feet, but whether or not we move that lot line, this, this structure when it's built is not gonna be in any different in the way that people view it and, and understand it and how it affects their lives. And so I think if the board thinks that this structure as designed is just too big for the neighborhood, or it's gonna be too close to the cottage to the west, or it's gonna have too much of an intensity of use that you've looked at, that's fine. You know, we probably wouldn't be able to get this permitted. But if you're saying the structure's okay as long as the lot line's another six feet away, you really just, it becomes a technocratic exercise. And that's really, you know, this board needs to have the ability to look at every application and, and not related to other applications, but to look at it and say, if we approve this, are we doing a disservice to our community in some way, shape or form? And, and I, and what we're hearing from this board is that the structure's okay. But, but that distance from the lot line's not. And, 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 and I'm trying to get you over that hump to look at this as a project and not as a number. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. And I'm not, I'm not a no, Ben. I may be convinced on the merits of the argument. My colleagues on the board, but I'm still struggling with the, when you have, when you can do something without having to come in front of the board on the size of the lot that you've had, that's what I'm struggling with. Not the, not the actual building itself, but to create a further non-conformity is, that's kind of what I'm struggling. And I'm not a no. If, if my esteemed colleagues on the board find a way of getting there, then I'm always reasonable. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say no for the sake of saying no.
I was kinda hoping the chair could, could reset the board at this point in the hearing, but I'm not sure I've ever seen that happen.
I don't think that's allowed.
I don't think it is either.
Yeah, I think, I think a card laid is a card played.
I, I'd like to hear from Trevor again as to
Yeah.
how he feels about it.
And, and Jan had her hand up, so can I call on her first? Yes, yeah.
Just to, to Ben's argument, and you're really good at this stuff.
Thank you, dear.
I don't disagree with you, but if, if the abutter was not what it is now, if it wasn't a cottage that's owned by the same people, we, we wouldn't think twice about saying no. If that was a, a, a separate, you know, a different abutter, a, a separate person,
Yeah, of course.
we would say no instantly.
Oh, I know.
So the only thing that I see a difference in is that they, at the, at this point, own the abutting property. So, you know.
But we can't even see where the cottage is. How close is the cottage to this lot line? That's another question.
It's a, it's 25 feet.
Yeah.
It's 25 feet off the lot line. That cottage.
The last page of our application package has
Yeah.
is a copy of the plan that shows the structure.
The plan of the land. So. And Mick wanted to hear from you, Trevor.
I don't know that I have anything creative to add at this particular moment. Okay.
Karen, if I may?
Yes, Sibel.
If I could just, I believe that this is something that Ben already has addressed in the application. But just to kind of go over it, by changing the lot property line, what we actually did do is the size of the lot is larger than the original. So it took a non-conformity and we made it, we improved it actually by making the lot bigger.
Okay, so. Well, the, the closest house is, the cottage is 25.5 feet off that lot line. And I do, I mean, you know, I know we're not in the business of, of doing non-con, you know, creating non-conformities. On the other hand, if I look at what the house looks like and what it will look like, I'm not seeing a big detriment to the neighborhood in, in what it would look like. And I'm not gonna vote on this, but that's just my own sense of it. But I also respect the fact that, you know, we are not in the business of creating non-conformities, and this one is a pretty big ask. But it does seem to me that the, the way the properties are laid out makes this look less of an intrusion than it does in other cases.
Sharon?
Yes, Will.
Yeah. Yeah, I, thinking about the substantially more, more detrimental to the, the, the neighborhood. Now, I'm sort of speaking to my fellow board members. It is, I, I have a hard time stating why this plan is more substantially detrimental to the name, to the neighborhood other than the fact that it's close to the lot line. But that in and of itself has nothing to do whether, whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Can I speak? I'd like to.
So that's, you know, I don't, I, I just, if, if someone could articulate to me why this plan is more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, but don't mention the setback, you know, how far is it? Just, just that. Why is this plan detrimental, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I like, I'd sort of like to hear it in case I'm off base.
Should I?
Okay, Rita?
It seems to me that it could be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood if this is changed. If this proposal is changed. I think that what has been designed here fits this structure. And yes, it is, it's right on the line. But you change that, you change this whole structure, or at least part of it, and I think that's detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
But where do we go?
Yeah, where do we go?
Make a suggestion that we're, I'm gonna ask the board to do something that we very rarely do.
Mick, can I just say something?
Go ahead.
Just quickly, then you can, because I can't, when, when you come up to that building and you have a two-story addition on it, that's the first thing you're gonna see. It's, it's gonna stick right out over the top of the other house. Now, is that detrimental? No, no, it isn't. But anyway, that's what I wanted to say, that this, that the addition, being a two-story addition, you will see it. I mean, you, you will see that it's there. It will draw your attention then. But I don't think it, it would be more detrimental. Okay, Mick?
Yeah, what I was gonna ask the board to do, which is something we, we stopped doing a long time ago, is just for Attorney Zender and for Sibel, if Sharon would indulge and just poll the board and see where we're at to try and move the project one way or the other.
Thank you, Mick.
Are you, are, is the board alright with that?
That's what.
I'm fine with it.
Trevor?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, Jan?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna poll, poll the board and I'm gonna start with Manny. Where are you leading right now?
I will vote for it.
Trevor?
I, I am surprising even myself, but I, I would actually vote for, in favor of it at this point.
Okay, Will?
I would vote for it.
Jan?
I will, because the abutter, they own the abutting property that we're concerned about.
Okay, and Nick, that's, now you've got your thing. Where are you?
I love this board. I can be persuaded on the merits of the argument. We love them, but because they do own it, I will not step in the way and say no. So I will vote yes on this.
Alright.
So.
Okay.
After all of that.
After all of that. Well, I think it was a good, good discussion. So.
That's why, that's the sender. That's why we have boards.
That's why we have boards, so we can, it can hash it all out. Okay, then I need a motion to go to findings.
I will make a motion to go to findings.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Manny has seconded. And so, thank you, Jan. Jan has draft findings for us on this one.
No, we have to have a vote, don't we?
Oh, yes, we do. Right. Manny?
Yes.
Trevor? You're voting to go to findings. Yes. Will?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And Jan?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
This is my first attempt at draft finding, so listen carefully and be brutal, okay? Here we go. 21-01 and Jeffrey Stefani, 640 Chueson Neck Road, map 19, parcel 80. Application for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and Bylaws 6.1.5.1B and S. 8.4.2 to alter, I'm sorry, I left something out. Section 6.1.5.2 and Section 8.4.2 to alter a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the R1 zoning district by constructing additions to the north and west sides of the dwelling. That's what the in the R one zoning district by constructing additions to the north and west sides of the dwelling. That's what the actual legal ad says. One, this is an application for a special permit to allow for a two-story, one thousand two hundred and ninety-six square foot addition, hereafter referred to as the addition, to the west side of the applicant's pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family, one-floor dwelling. Two, this is a single-family dwelling, I'm sorry, there is a single-family dwelling, a freestanding shed and a freestanding greenhouse on the property. Three, the dwelling is entitled to treatment as a lawfully pre-existing, nonconforming structure, having been built in nineteen fifty-four, according to the assessor's office before zoning was adopted by Wellfleet. Four, the dwelling is pre-existing, nonconforming as to minimum front yard setback distance. In parentheses, zero point eight feet, existing at closest point to Chequestet Neck, Neck Road property line, where thirty feet is required. And as to minimum side yard, and in parentheses, west setback distance, eight point six feet at closest point where twenty-five feet is required. Five, the dwelling is built on a lawfully pre-existing, nonconforming lot in the residential one, R one zoning district. Six, and I'm gonna need somebody's help with the wording on this one. The original eight thousand two hundred and seventy-six square foot lot was created in nineteen fifty-two and has been or will be combined. Which one do we use? Has been combined or will be?
I think, I, I think what I heard was will be.
Right, is that good with you, Ben? Will be?
Is that all right with you, Ben?
I think that's correct, Jan.
All right, will be combined with an adjoining lot, and in parentheses, new lot eighty-six to be combined with current lot seventeen on Land Court Plan one zero six six nine dash Y, and parentheses?
That's correct.
Combined lot, parentheses, seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet, where thirty thousand square feet is required, in parentheses, will be less nonconforming than the original, original lot, and will provide greater distance for side and rear setbacks along the westerly, northerly, and easterly property lines. Seven, the applicable provisions for this application under the Town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws, WZBL, are Sections five point four point one, minimum lot requirements, thirty thousand square feet in R one district. Five point four point two, minimum yard requirements, side setback twenty-five feet in R one district. Six point one point five point one B, alteration of a nonconforming, single-family dwelling, which increases the nonconformity, and eight point four point two special permit granting criteria. Eight, we're not halfway through yet. The proposed addition will maintain the nonconforming front setback and will decrease the westerly setback from eight point six feet to zero point three feet. There will be a volumetric increase. That's number nine. Number ten, the proposed addition will increase the dwelling height from thirteen point three feet to twenty-five point seven feet. Eleven, the proposed addition will increase the lot coverage from seven point eight percent to fifteen percent. Twelve, the proposed addition will increase the square footage of the dwelling from one thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet to two thousand four hundred and eighty-one square feet. Thirteen, there will be no change in use. Fourteen, there will be no increase in use. Fifteen, the use conforms with the objectives of the R one district as stated in WZBL three point two. There were no appearances or correspondence in support of the application. There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. There were no objections from abutters. Well, that's sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, okay, nineteen. Section six point one point five point one B, the board finds that the alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, nonconforming structure. One. Section eight point four point two point one, A, the board finds that the addition is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the addition. B, the board finds that the roads, drainage, and the other public utilities would not be affected by the addition. C, the board finds that the addition will not contribute to environmental damage. Twenty-one, Section eight point four point two point two, the board finds that the proposed alteration will not affect diversity of services or housing opportunities or have seasonal consequences, and that the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposed proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town or the vicinity. Last one, twenty-two, Section eight point four point two point three, A, the board finds a construction of the addition will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties. B, the proposed gravel driveway to replace the existing parking along paved shoulder will increase safety on Chequestet Neck Road, and the new driveway will be less visible than the existing parking shoulder. C, the board finds there is no traditional public access to or along the shoreline at Locust. And that's what I have, except for, we may have a condition at some point. I don't know if we do that now, Sharon or Lily?
Now, we've, I need a motion to accept the findings.
I shall move.
Okay, and I need a second?
I'll second.
Trevor, Trevor, second. And I think you can add the condition before we vote on the findings. I think that's what we did last time, right?
Okay.
Okay, and the condition is?
Well, I'm gonna say the applicant has agreed that the following condition will attach to any approval that may be given by the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals. So what's the?
The condition is that the combination of the lots has been filed in Land Court.
That, that has to be approved by the Land.
That has been, yeah, that the combination of lots has been approved by Land Court before construction begins. Does that make sense, Ben? Is that?
I, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to just think through the timing of the Land Court approval process. I believe it's already been submitted to Land Court. I would, yeah, I would ask that the condition be that the Land Court approves the re-division of the land prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Okay.
Wait, not the.
Priority, not the, not construction, but prior to issuance of the building permit.
I, I really, it, it, it could be prior to construction beginning, but you know, once, once the building, it's a building permit, you can build. So I, I don't, I don't think you maintain any control over the condition in that.
Sure, sure.
So I, I think it would be, I think we would have to have an approval.
Prior to the building, building permit, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let me make sure I have it, that the, and you don't want to say combinations, that the re-division of land has been approved by Land Court. And what follows?
Before a building permit is. Yeah, prior to the issuance of the building permit. Okay. All right, now I I need to vote on the findings. Nick?
We did the findings.
What? No, but we didn't vote on them. We, we did the condition without, without taking the vote.
Okay.
We voted on the, we voted on the findings. We haven't moved to approve.
Oh, moved to the permit. Okay, good. All right, thank you. So you're moving, Trevor moves the permit, and Mick seconds it, and all in favor, Jan?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And Will?
Aye.
No fair.
Thank you all. I would say, I, I have to say, you know, and, and it's not because I was successful in the permanent, I think it was, I think that was a very well-discussed hearing by, by all members of the board.
I have a question for you. Do you think Bob Hanky was looking on, down on this and having?
And, and leaning to Roger to say, what did they say?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna mute my microphone. I may sign off in a minute, but thank you all.
Okay, all right.
Be welcome.
It was a pleasure.
Thanks, Sibel.
Thank you, Sibel.
Thank you, Sibel. Nice to see you again. And I just want to check, for anyone who joined us late and is looking for the, the twenty oh seven, the Starboard Tac Holdings, I should let you know that that application has been withdrawn, and so if you're waiting for that one, you can go ahead and, and log back off. Because the applicant, we've accepted withdrawal without prejudice, and I think some people have been hanging on for that, so just, so you know. Okay, are we ready for twenty-one point zero two?
Absolutely.
This is Jeremy Young, one forty Commercial Street, application for a special permit to construct a contractor's shop and garage in the site of a demolished building that held the N B and B rooms, under Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point three point one and six point two three. And the board for this will be Will, Trevor, Manny, Mick, and myself. And I've seen that Jeremy is here. Jeremy, are you speaking to this, or is?
Yes.
Someone else? Okay, there you are. Yes. All right, tell us about it.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Young. This is my wife, Heather Young. And we're looking to construct a contractor's shop, garage in the site of a demolished building that held an inn and B and B rooms at one forty Commercial Street.
All right, thank you. And, all right, and we have, the board has been out. They have seen the, the, the site, and they have seen the the plans, and I believe there, is there anyone here who wants to speak to this before I go to the board? Mickey, looks like you have to, has a hand up. Mickey Tripathy? In which case you must unmute yourself. And state your name.
No, no, I, I, if I have my hand up, it's by accident.
Okay, very good. All right. Do we see any other hands? I don't see any other hands. Chris, did we have any letters on this one?
Sorry, it's Barbara Nestle from sixty-five Holbrook Avenue.
Oh, okay, very good. There you are. I'm sorry.
Too many.
Yes, Barbara Nestle.
Yeah, so I just live across, so we are across the street in sixty-five Holbrook Avenue, which is our summer, little summer cottage. And I just have a quick question for Jeremy. So basically, what is the plan for access? I saw, according to the plan, there is absolutely no intention to have access from Holbrook Avenue.
Okay, all right. So Jeremy, do you have?
That's right, Barbara. We went through conservation, Stable La Joy with Felco Engineering presented that plan when we demolished the lodge building in the back, which was part of the Holden Inn. We were requesting from the conservation to do access off of Holbrook, but we have removed that idea, and all access will be from one forty Commercial Street.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Did you have anything else to say?
Yeah, just living, literally, being across, across the road, my question is more because it's a residential area, and you're planning to build a garage. So how does that fit into the overall, because I've seen the picture online, it looks like a nice garage building, but how was your plan? How does that fit into the overall residential picture? And do you long-term plan to demolish that garage or change it into a more residential building longer term?
My future plan is to leave it as a garage. I've undergone three-year renovation with my house, apartment in the front along Commercial Street, and really don't have any desire to do anything up there besides that.
Okay. But that's also much from Holbrook Avenue. Thank you so much.
Okay, so that's the questions from Holbrook Avenue. And is there anyone else in the audience? Do I see any other hands? So Chris, did we have any letters?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right, then I will go to the board, and why not start with Manny?
I don't see any problems with this at all. He even meets the setbacks, from what I can see. And I know he, he's a very good businessman, young man, then, here in this, in Wellfleet. They always keep their buildings immaculate, and I'm sure this will help clear up the backyard some. Not that it's a mess right now, but I would be for this project.
All right, yeah, thank you. And Will?
I'll defer my questions for now, if you don't mind.
Nope, don't mind at all. Mick?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with this project. I don't know Jeremy personally, although then I see his trucks around town. He always, the trucks are always immaculate, so that, to me, if somebody keeps their equipment in construction immaculate, then they tend to keep their property immaculate, so, and it's nice to see a young person in Wellfleet being successful, so I'm in favor of the project.
Okay, Trevor?
I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Regarding the number of uses on the property, I don't know if this is something that the board wants to discuss, but
Yes.
if there's any, any concerns with the number of uses. And I also also have some concerns with the sheds that are being proposed. There are four, it looks like four, ten by twelve sheds that are being proposed, which would be ten, ten feet and eight, nine feet off the property line. My concern is that the way they're shown, they're, they're drawn to the, attached together or hard up against one another. And in, in my opinion, if you take a ten by ten, ten by twelve shed and, and build it, construct it directly against another ten by twelve shed, it ceases to become a ten by twelve shed and becomes a twelve by twenty shed. In which case it would need to meet different setback requirements. Those are my two, those are my two concerns at the moment.
Okay, let me raise that question about the uses right off, because we, we've had this problem with, with another application, so we need to get it cleared up. Is, is the Holden Inn still operating as a business on the property?
Yes, it is.
Right, so.
We, we unfortunately had to close down for the twenty twenty season, related to COVID, but we are open as of the first of the year, planning on opening for the twenty-one season.
So, the, the question we have difficulty with is in the R one district, which is where you are. We don't, we can't give special permits for multiple uses on the same property. And so if we, this is coming in under the service trade home business, which is one use of the property. And you can certainly have a service trade home business and your residence on that. That is how it's designed to be written. But then running another business on the same property starts to get to be three uses, and I'm not sure we have the authority to give you a permit to do yet another use. So. Want to hear from?
Yeah, can I, can I address a question relate, related to that issue?
Yes.
Jeremy, how, how many square feet is your residence there?
Uh, where I reside, my family, myself.
Yeah.
Um.
Roughly, I don't need a.
I would estimate it, I, I don't know the exact square footage. I would estimate the percentage at three percent. I mean, there, there's so many variables. We do fall under the max fifteen percent. You know, we're up to, we're looking at a proposed eleven point seven percent use of, of all buildings on the property.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I said that, I, I, I say that because there's a requirement that the, that the business property be no more than thirty percent of the floor area of your, of your residence. So if we don't have a figure, I mean, a real, exact figure, I, I don't think we can move on from that.
My, the person that prepared the plan, Peter Kane, I would relate to him for answering this question that he's on.
Sure.
Great, okay, so.
Adam Chair?
All right, yes, you are Peter Kane, right? You are not Lisa, you're Peter Kane.
Yeah, it's my stage name.
Yes, right, okay.
Yeah, you know what? I didn't get inside the house at all to, to, to measure up the, the, the living spaces. That's not part of the requirements for the, for the zoning bylaws, as I understand it, for the lot coverage and all. But back to a couple of, an issue just earlier about being in the residential district. It's, this property is a little bit complicated because it's in two different districts. The majority of the. The majority of the structures are on the Commercial Street side, which is the central, uh, which is the, uh, Central District.
Yeah.
And I think what Jeremy was trying to do in general is to comply to the more restrictive requirements for the residential district versus trying to, to, uh, to deal with the, uh, the ones on the Central District. So I, I, I have, like I said, I haven't been inside. I don't know how to answer Will's question about the, uh, the, the square footage inside that, that they live in versus I, I believe his folks live there. Um, that's a sticky question. I don't have the answer to.
Okay. Yeah. The, the difficulty we have, because we've just had this in, in a great deal of difficulty is the, um, is multiple uses on a property allowed in the commercial one and two districts, but not anywhere else. But I don't know to what extent the service trade home business is part of those uses. And I know that I have Paul, our building inspector on the line, and I'm going to ask him if he could clarify that part of that for me. Paul, could you unmute yourself and speak to us a little bit about the multiple uses here?
Hi Sharon.
Hi Paul.
Oh, yeah. So the service trade home business is an accessory use to his residential, um, use of the property.
Okay. But the fact that there's a second business operating on the same property, that's my, my question. Cause it's an in on that property as well.
Yeah, which is in Central District, which I believe allows concurrent uses in Central District.
No. No, only in the C1 and C2.
In the 3.2 of zoning bylaws, it refers to district objectives and it specifies concurrent uses in the Central District. That's just, I'm just reading to you what the bylaw states. It's, it's your vision. I, I really just weighing in on.
Current development of residential and non-residential uses subject to conditions. Yes. But the problem is, if you go to the one we've gotten, all gotten terribly familiar with, which is in, in 5.4.13, intensity of use applications to more than one prince, allowed principal use and/or principal building on a lot. It, it says more than one allowed principal use and/or principal building may be permitted on a lot in District C and C2 with a special permit granted by the zoning board of appeals. So while it's concurrent uses are allowed, um, those are residents and business, but not residents and more than one business, I think.
It's the board's decision. You can vote on it. I'm just, the, uh, Central District says allows concurrent uses. So however, you're, whatever your interpretation is, that's, uh, that's fine. But the service trade business is just an accessory use to his residential, which he does live at Commercial Street.
Right. Okay.
That's up to your interpretation.
So this, this is not actually, I would say, a new use because he has been working out of there for many, many years. I don't know if that has a bearing on it. I think Jeremy, how, how many years have you been working out of there, Jeremy?
Uh, this will be my, this will be my 20th year.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
But that, maybe that has a bearing on it.
Don't know. Jan?
Madam Chairman, I, I was just going to say that he's, regardless, he's grandfathered for the uses on that property as they exist.
Okay.
Anybody can have a service trade home business.
Good. Okay.
And also, we need to please look at the definition of floor area in the front of the book. It's very specific and it also includes accessory buildings. And he's got a garage on this lot that exists. That's his garage. So that has to count in too. And the floor area includes all, but it's very specific. It's, please go read that before you decide how much space he has, how much square footage.
If I could speak to that.
Yes, yes.
The, the, the calculation table that I have on there does include, uh, the, the garage in, in the existing garage that's there in, in those figures.
Okay, let's find that.
Floor area of a building is the sum of the gross horizontal areas of the several floors of the building and its accessory buildings on the same lot, excluding cellar and basement and goes on from there. But including roof, roof porches.
Okay. So, and when we're looking at this particular one, we're looking at which section of the bylaw here, so that I'm clear.
The definition I'm talking about?
Uh, yes.
It's on page six of, and it says floor area of a building.
Are we looking at this for building coverage or for the specific thing that has to do with the?
Under service trade home business.
Under service trade home business. That's what I was.
Allowed 30%, he can't exceed 30% of the total floor area of the principal and accessory building. So we need to calculate that.
Okay. All right. All right. So we need 30%. And the floor area in use, this is, would be the floor area in use by the,
Residents.
By the service trade home business.
No, and, and by, by the residents too. We need a, we need a chart that shows what, what's the square footage of the, of the residents? And what's the square footage of, of, of the sheds plus the, the garage to be built and, and anything connected with the business.
And the residents has to be separated out from the inn.
Right.
Yeah, the residents has to be separate from the inn. Right. Okay. All right.
And, and I'd also like to point out that I, I, I believe the setback requirement for the sheds is 25 feet.
I would, um, am I muted? I think that depends on what the purpose of those sheds are.
Right. That's why those sheds, I assume are, are for the business, not, not for the resident.
You assume, but I think we should ask Mr. Young. I assume they are too. I agree with you. Just, I think we need to know.
Okay. So Jeremy, yes?
Uh, getting back to Trevor's question, uh, the two proposed sheds up along Holbrook, 10 by 12s and then two sheds in the middle of the property at the end of the driveway. Those two sheds have been constructed. They are not butted up to one another. There is a three foot space in between those two. There will be a three foot space in between the two proposed sheds up against Holbrook.
I'd like to apologize for having, uh, shown them incorrectly. Then Jeremy, I may have misunderstood our conversations, but I can certainly make those changes to, to represent that. And to Will's question, you know, I do think, um, we fall under the shed definition of the 120 square feet or less, um, for being able to be up to five feet from the property line, but they
Yes.
Wanted to keep them back a little further.
But whoa, 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 whoa. What are those sheds being used for?
Uh, the, the two sheds, uh, the end of the driveway in the center, uh, those are being used for personal use.
Okay.
And then the two sheds up back, um, are, uh, gonna also be for personal use as well.
Okay. So they aren't part of the business?
No. The only thing would be is, is the 30 by 40 for shop.
Rush.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, where am I?
So I, I understand then that the, the site plan is drawn with regards to the sheds a, a bit incorrectly. If they're three feet apart, then I suppose that they meet the definition of a shed and, and they're okay. I do, I think that the, the issue of the 30% in the, in the service trade home business section, lot, uh, you know, part G, when we're talking about the floor area, that seems to be the biggest.
Right.
Right.
This point.
Question right now.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest question.
So who, who does the calculate? Is Jeremy, will Jeremy take care of doing these calculations or?
Yes.
Sure. That'll be Peter Kane.
We aren't going to do them. So, yes. And, and the other thing you, you want to look at closely in that six, 6.2, 3.2 is about vehicles. And how many vehicles are going to be on the property at any one time? There's a lot of different conditions you have to meet about the number of axles and, and things like that.
Yeah. I, cause what I would like to see next month is, I like the, uh, list of all, the number of and employees that, that are working and a list of all, all the vehicles of any sort and what their, the number of axles on each one is.
Yeah. And it might, it might sound like we're being nitpicky about this, but it's all, it's, we're not. This is all clearly spelled out in section 6.23.2. So I would suggest that Jeremy read through that carefully and that's what we're talking, that's what we're coming back to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think it should, is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You're a little faint.
You're a little faint. You're a little faint. Talk a little louder.
Uh, talk a little louder. Turn on my, I don't know. Probably should put earphones on. Yeah, Jeremy, I think the best thing for you to do is, as, as others have said, just look at that, um, service trade home business by law. And in your submission, you should go through each one of the factors and, or requirements and address them. And that will make a lot, our lives a lot easier and yours too.
Yep. Right. Jan, did you have another question?
I, no, I have some, some hints for Jeremy, I think, through you, Madam Chair. There is a specific definition of family in the bylaws and it's, might not be what you think or everybody else would think. So please check that. I also pulled the, well, I helped write this, amend this bylaw. So I'm pretty familiar with it. I have a copy of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90, Section 1, and what they consider vehicles. And we reference that. So, um, we all need that information. I can send Massachusetts General Law 90, Section, uh, Section 1 to the board too. So we understand what's considered a vehicle.
Okay. That would help. Okay.
I guess that's it.
We said, did you have another question? Rhetha has another question.
On, how about the parking for the inn? Is that included in this as well?
No, I don't think so. I think what we've established is the in is a grandfathered use and we're not looking at it at all. Which gets us out of the, the multiple use and gets us out of the parking in general. So.
You do have lost the applicant.
We do seem to have lost the applicant. When we, it was something we said. Or many things. Jeremy, where are you? Oh.
Oh, well.
Well, Paul, are you able to speak for him in terms of, of?
I'm texting him right now to get back on the Zoom.
Oh, good. Okay.
By the way, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not really representing him so much as trying to, to help out if there are any questions regarding the plan per se. But I'd be happy to, if he doesn't get a chance to get back on, you know, relay to him, uh, any additional information that you guys might, might, might want to provide.
What I'm basically hearing the board say is that if, if they go through 6.23
Yeah.
And, and just sort of check off all the boxes and say, this is the answer to this one. This is the answer to that one. Then we would be in better shape to, to act on this.
Yeah. It sounds like the, it sounds like more of a use question than a dimensional question.
It really is more, more, you know, because, yeah.
Uh, just so you know, they are trying to get back on, but they lost their signal.
They lost their internet. Welcome to Wealthy.
Yes, exactly.
That does happen. And that is one of the things of Zoom.
You, you, um, you might want to help them.
Ah, there he is.
Do the calculation.
He's back.
Areas.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that for the, um, you know, again, related to the use there of the, of the inside. Yeah. I'd, I'd be happy to do that. I didn't realize initially that that was such a, uh, an issue. I thought it was just a lock coverage.
Yeah, you were thinking of it.
Area ratios.
Yeah. Well, I admitted him a minute ago. Jeremy, are you, oh, there you are. Good.
Sorry, we lost signal.
I know it happens in Wealthy. So what we were saying is that if you go through 6.23 and just sort of use it as a checklist and say, okay, this, these are the answers to all these things, that we would be in a much better position to, than just go ahead with the application.
Okay.
That works. Which mean that, that you would need to get those answers to Chris by when, Chris? If they want to come back at the next meeting, which I assume they would.
Yes.
Chris?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
She's here. I see her. She's just taking notes and, and.
Okay.
Okay. Was there a motion for continuing?
Not yet. I'm, we're trying to get dates here. Um, they, they would be coming back, um, on February 11th, which would mean that we would need the answers to the questions. When do you need those by? So you get it to us so that we can.
Um, one week before.
One week before. Okay. So if you can get it to Chris by February 4th, we can put you on on February 11th.
Okay.
Would that work? All right. Then I, I need a motion for a continue.
Madam Chair, before, before you make a motion.
Yes.
Jeremy, are you clear on what, um, you need to do so that we can make progress on this?
Yes.
So.
Yes, you need the, 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 um, the total usage, usages of my residence compared to my proposed, um, shop garage.
Right.
And, and the line items of, um, how many vehicles, axles, how many employees? Uh, that's all I heard until I got cut out.
Right. Well, once, once you read, uh, the 6.23 point, whatever, two, I think, uh, then you, you can go from there.
Yeah.
And you have help with your partner.
Right.
Lisa?
Yes.
Lisa will help. And also, um, yeah. And, and Paul, you could help them out with this as well, could you not? If they were confused about something? Building inspector, where are you? Yes, yes.
About the.
Yeah, right. Okay, great. All right.
Doors open.
Okay, great. Uh, well, not actually, you can't really open the door, but.
Euphorically.
But your phone works. Yes. Okay. All right. I need a motion to continue then.
To continue at the February 11th.
Okay. Trevor has moved, moved. I need a second.
A second.
Mick seconds. And now I need a, a vote count. And it is Mick.
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Trevor? And myself. Yes. Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. I'm sorry about this, but I think we're much further along than we were before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right. One second while I change gears. Okay. Uh, final case. Twenty seventeen, the Mandel Family Realty Trust. This is continued from last time. Application for a special permit to reconstruct a single family dwelling on a nonconforming lot. Previously developed with a single family residence, which was destroyed by a fire several years ago. And the board was myself, Trevor, Will, Mick, and Janet. Okay. And I believe it is Ms. Bealan, are you lead here tonight?
Kevin Crane, Madam Chair.
Kevin Crane, there you are, Mr. Crane. Yes, okay.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, if you recall from the last meeting, it was suggested that the board seek counsel from town council.
Yes.
Uh, in connection with the application under consideration.
Right.
I believe that that has been done.
Yes.
The town council submitted a letter to the chair dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, which I would assume all the members of the board have received.
Yes.
And the opinion of the town council is consistent with the opinion that we have advocated for the applicant and the Mandel family in connection with the proposal to replace a preexisting nonconforming structure uh on the lot whereby the original structure was burned down. If the board recalls, the uh structure which was destroyed uh was nonconforming in that it crossed the front yard property line at Meadow Avenue. Not only did it fail to meet that setback, but as I say, it actually encroached right into a Meadow Avenue West. The applicants are proposing to construct a single family residential structure which conforms in all respects to the applicable requirements of the zoning bylaw. The proposed structure, as I believe I indicated at the last meeting, is a three bedroom structure. The structure which was destroyed was a three bedroom structure, as indicated by the owners of the property who offered testimony at the last hearing. The footprint of the building as proposed was less than eighteen hundred square feet. Uh, and the total square footage of the building was some twenty five hundred and twenty square feet. So in addition to the fact that the uh we comply with all zoning, we are actually only twelve percent lot coverage, whereas fifteen, I believe, is allowed under the zoning bylaw. So we have not attempted to max out the every available portion of lot coverage that is allowed uh under the bylaw. Uh, so given the fact that the town council has rendered uh the opinion that the the application can be considered by the board and is not foreclosed by section six point one point two, I believe, of the bylaw, which was being discussed at the last meeting. The board would consider the application and determine whether or not the reconstruction or replacement of that structure creates a condition that is substantially more detrimental than the structure that previously existed on the lot. We would suggest to the board that what is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than uh substantially more detrimental than what existed. In that we have eliminated the nonconforming conditions and have replaced a nonconforming structure with a conforming structure. The project has been approved and an art conditions had has issued from the Conservation Commission, which would be an indication that the project can be developed without adverse impact on adjacent wetland resource areas. There's no increase in the bedroom count. The proposal also calls for the installation of a Title V civic system with denitrification components, thereby reducing nitrogen, also reducing any impact on environmental considerations. Uh, and we have proposed a structure that is uh consistent with other development in the neighborhood. Is we have not the uh exceeded or seek any relief relative to the lot coverage requirement. And I would suggest to the board that the board would be well within its discretion to find that what is being proposed is not substantially more detrimental than what preexisted.
Thank you. All right, and is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue from the audience? Ms. Campus?
If Ms. Bealan also wants to speak, I think she's on behalf of the applicant as well.
Yeah, let her go first. Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bealan.
Good evening, Kimberly Bealan, on behalf of the owners of the property. Just very briefly, we submitted on January fifth, a really detailed timeline of our client's ownership of the property. It dates back a hundred years to nineteen nineteen. This has been a family property for obviously a long duration. And then subsequent to the fire, I think it was important to lay out all the efforts that they undertook to really permit the site and get it before you all over a period of years. And and so they've been diligent in doing that, and they just wanted to bring that to your attention. Certainly, we support Attorney Crane's argument. We agree with his argument and assessment of the zoning bylaw, and certainly town council has opined that that argument is the correct interpretation. And so we would also request, obviously, that the board grant the special permit.
Okay, all right. Is anyone else speaking to the applicant, I guess, before I go to? Okay, then, Ms. Campus, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jeannie Campus here on behalf of Richard Thaler and Abutter. I respectfully disagree with town council's opinion. I think the question that town council answered in her letter was whether a preexisting nonconforming structure at this site could be enlarged. But the question is not that. The question is whether there is a preexisting nonconforming structure at the site. And so before you can determine whether a preexisting nonconforming structure may be altered and whether that may intensify existing nonconformities or make it substantially more detrimental to the neighbor neighborhood, you first must determine a threshold issue, and that is whether there's an existing nonconforming structure at the site in first place. And here there's not. The question there is governed by the zoning statute forty A, section six, and the third paragraph, and it allows local bylaws. It allows them to define and regulate nonconforming uses and structures that are not used for a period of two years or more. And here, through section six point one point two restoration, the bylaw restricts the reconstruction of a nonconforming structure within a twelve month time period to be completed within twenty four months. Therefore, under this section, the bylaw governs whether there's extinguishing of a nonconformity here. And in this case, there's been no nonconforming structure on this site since twenty sixteen. We've gone four and a half years, which is well beyond the two years set forth in the zoning bylaw. There is no nonconforming structure to be expanded here or reconstructed. And therefore, all the case law cited by town council in her opinion is in opposite, I would argue. And another thing I wanted to point out is that town council noted that the cases I cited in my December ninth letter speak to situations where the applicant was seeking to rebuild in kind. And that's simply not the case. Those cases were analogous to this, where there was a small cottage on the site. The applicants in those cases actually sought to construct a much larger building. At the very least, I would ask that you go back to town council, bring these facts to her attention, and and see if that alters her analysis. But I think the primary concern here is that this this entire opinion assumes that there is an existing structure at the site, and there simply is not. The section of the bylaw, section six point one point five, does say that a nonconforming, single or two family residential structure may be altered. But again, that section two assumes that there's a preexisting nonconforming structure on the site, and here we don't have one. This letter does not address the threshold issue. Is there a preexisting nonconforming structure on site? Or has that nonconformity been extinguished by virtue of the fact that it was destroyed four and a half years ago? And there's currently nothing on the site now. I'm concerned with the precedent that this case that this opinion may set if the board finds that this is allowable by special permit. This were the case, structures, not only structures that are destroyed by fire or other catastrophe, but structures that are voluntarily demolished could be gone for years. And and a number a number of years. And someone could come along and rebuild many, many years later under this opinion. And I don't think that, one, I don't think that goes to the heart of the zoning bylaw and the zoning statute, which is to eventually eliminate nonconformities. But also, I don't think it I don't think it's right based on the language in the bylaw. The clear intent is to require that a nonconforming structure destroyed be rebuilt within two years. And if when you want to rebuild that structure, you want to expand it as the applicant seeks to do, you ask for a special permit, but you still have to do so within two years. Otherwise, you have an unlimited period of time by which to go to the zoning board, get a special permit, and rebuild a structure that hasn't existed for many years. I'm happy to speak to the substantially more detrimental aspect of the project as well. We've talked a lot about it, or you've talked a lot about that tonight. And I think here, even though this case you do have a conforming structure, at least with respect to setbacks and lot coverage is not conforming because it's on a nonconforming lot. But you do have a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. You have a big water issue here. Groundwater is specifically protected under your zoning bylaw. And yes, there are three bedrooms in this in this proposed house. And yes, there were three bedrooms in the last house, but this house is significantly larger. And I don't know the exact square footage of the house. The the footprints fifty over fifteen hundred square feet, and it's a two story property with a basement. So I'm imagining it's close to three thousand square feet, if not more. The prior dwelling by your assessor's records was five hundred and fifty something square feet. There is going to be a significant increase in residential use of this property that's going to exacerbate an already dire condition in the groundwater, and that is the salt, the elevated salt content. I know the neighbors, including my client, can speak more directly to that. And the third and final issue we raised last time as well, this propose this plan includes a unilateral relocation of an easement that benefits my client. And case law is quite clear in Massachusetts that you cannot, as the servient owner relocate and access easement without the agreement of the dominant estate, which is here, Mr. Thaler, or by court order. So any decision issued by this board purporting to allow the unilateral relocation of the easement shown on this plan would be legally intenable as a matter of law. And with that, that's all I have for now. Again, I would I would urge the board to go back to town council with the questions about the the cases that I cited in my letter and to address the real issue, which is again, whether there is a preexisting nonconforming structure at the site. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Mr. Thaler.
Thank you very much. Couple of incremental things. As as regards the efforts, when when I I was a good friend of the the neighbors, and when they initially undertook to build a materially smaller home, I actually recommended builders and 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 I'm quite familiar with the building industry and said I could even help them with mortgage companies. For whatever reason, I think relating to financing, and it may be because one family member decided to pull out of the endeavor, within the two year period, they had to back off. And what they've come forward now is materially different from what they were talking about previously. Issues that have not been discussed, they have been discussed, but you know, the burden of proof should be on the party that wants to build the house is the water issue. We have done tests of the McDonald's and and my property, the waters adjacent. And the the range of salt, what is it, MPG per thousand? Gina, you can correct me. But in one instance, it was six hundred and another it was twenty two hundred. And twenty two hundred is beyond any allowable amount of salt that the town allows. And the federal government requires twenty parts. So, you know, that is going to be a problem when you have four bathrooms in in a much larger house that's going to have much more number of people in in there. Uh, another thing, I I do know that house reasonably well. The office, quote unquote, office is bigger than the entire second floor of the old house. So, you know, I would argue, and you guys know Wellfleet, that it's a four bedroom house, and there may be even more with the storage and the finished basement, who the devil knows? But that that's going to be materially more usage and demand on water. Now, my friend Jamie Rice, who's also a neighbor, is not on the call. He has to make calls to Asia in in the evening, is particularly grieved as well because the placement of their well is right up against his property. He has significant salt intrusion, and he is at a higher location, and he is very much afraid that they are going to suck his well dry and and further salinate him. Which which is a serious problem. And finally, my family has been in Wellfleet. First family members were married in Wellfleet in sixteen ninety. Our family has been there for a very long time. My brother is a full time resident. You may know my brother Tom. He helps everybody vote there. And I knew Bob Hanky from St. James's Fishery. I've known Bob since I was a kid. And Eleanor and I shared political views. Which may be good or bad, but should be irrelevant to this discussion. So I I know the town, and I'm concerned about the town, and I think you established your rules about reconstruction because you were concerned about preservation of the town. And I think you open up Pandora's box, and you get on a very slippery slope. And developers will go around looking for opportunities. And so I think, you know, Jeannie's admonition is the correct one. Uh, and and I would also note that, as I listened, and I've been on this call since quarter seven, all of the requests for special permits have been where there is a preexisting house. Uh, and and within the and within the timeframe. And and so, you know, I I I I'm not being critical of of the council, but I just don't think they they got it right. And then, under any circumstance, I think you have to ask yourself, do you really want to open up Pandora's box in addition to the material detrimental aspects? And I know with McDonald's are on the phone. They share my view completely. I think there's also a concern on the easement. They want to move our easement. They have not come to us and talked to us about it, much less gotten our permission, and they want to move that easement close to the embankment. Now, Mr. Bliss will tell you that the house stood there, and so that the embankment will be fine. But there's a material difference between a small house and heavy equipment moving across a sand embankment on on a regular basis. And so that's a reasonable concern, which I know the McDonald's have in particular, but I I I share as well. Then there's also the issue of what I would call defoliation. It's a small lot. Many of you have been on the lot. And it's going to basically be defoliated. Yes, they will replant it. And in that replanning process, they will use an awful lot of water. So that's that's my my observation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't hold it against me if I shared Eleanor's views.
The I have a hand up from Mr. Bliss.
Yes.
How do I get my picture on here?
What's that? Hello?
I think that must have been something
Sorry.
in in the background of something. Go ahead, Mr. Bliss.
I'd like to first address the water issue since it comes up at every meeting we've had. It's incredibly hypocritical for Mr. Thaler to make a big issue out of the water when he has a homemade sprinkler system.
We don't want to get into a back and forth like this. So if you could just speak to the quality of the water, that would be sufficient.
Quality of the water is not good. It's not good anywhere on Lieutenant Island. Everybody knows that. That's a board of health issue that we have to either pass or not pass. So the fact that there was the Mandels had a well on the property long before any of these abutters owned their homes. So there was it's not, we're not putting a new well. We are putting a new well location. But there was an existing well there.
Actually, you know, just for the purposes of of making clear where we are here. We have no jurisdiction over the water. That is the Board of Health. And we have no jurisdiction over the easement. So if we have to work on just, I'd like to just kind of move those issues to the side because they're not really ours.
Okay. So that's fine. My other issue, we're going to use gray water to water our plants. He's aware of that. It's in the order of conditions, but we'll let the. the, one quick note on the easement. It's 50 feet from the coastal bank. It's beyond the 50-foot buffer. It's not on the edge of the coastal bank as represented. And it also is not clearly defined in the, and there's no measurement. So that's not your issue, but I want to put that on the record. The house, uh, is actually, Mr. Thaler, at the previous meeting said it would be the largest house on the smallest lot. So I did a little research. Actually, it's not even the largest house on Knight Street. The McDonald home by the assessor field card is over 3,000 square feet. And there are four other lots, uh, within quarter mile of our lot that are smaller. So, um, it is a smaller lot, but most of Lieutenant Island is undersized. So we all are aware of that. Uh, we tried to keep this house reasonably sized, 2,500 square feet. It's not a McMansion by anybody's standards. Uh, we're going to make the house, uh, all out of natural cedar products so that it will weather and blend into the landscape. We are going to do as minimal, a minimal amount of damage to the environment as we possibly can during construction because anything we damage, we have to replace. So we are very sensitive to that issue. So, um, and as far as the zoning bylaws, I believe the attorneys have spoken to that. From the beginning, we have asserted that 6.1.2 is not the applicable, applicable by law for this, for our application. The town council has concurred, but again, the board ultimately has to make the decision. So I'll leave that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak from the audience? Chris, did we have any letters? Chris?
Only the ones from the attorneys, which everyone has received.
Which everyone has received. Okay, good. All right. Well, I will go to the board for questions then. And I'll start with Manny. It's your first chance to look at this.
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, all right. Trevor.
Um, I don't know if I have any questions. At the moment, I, I find myself agreeing with attorney campus on this. So, I don't know. For me, this, I don't see how section 6.1.2 is not the applicable section. It seems to be completely the most appropriate section to look at this under. And that requires construction be commenced within 24 months and it, and it wasn't. So to me, this reverts to an unbuiltable lot. And I'm not sure I see a way past that.
Thank you. Um, Andy?
Well, you know, I've read Carolyn's letter five times. I understand the logic, but somehow it's not convincing. It's funny. But if we go beyond that, uh, I think, and we go to the, the, uh, the, uh, the impact standard of the neighborhood. You know, I was out there today. And, you know, Lieutenant Island is like a lot of places in Wellfleet. It's, uh, maybe even more so, but there are a number of very large homes that are there are a couple of the right, right around that where this house would go. And then there were some small ones. I, I don't. So as to that, I, I am, I do not think that this would be a sust- a substantial detrimental impact. But I still cannot get around, I mean, I understand what she's saying. I'm reading this by law. And she's saying that when, that, you know, that the logic obviously is that, uh, the difference between what's happening here, they're rebuilding a structure and, uh, that's conforming. On a nonconforming lot. I don't know. I, I didn't draft that 6.1.2, so I can't say, but it, I, I, my sense was that that wasn't intended to be as restrictive as it may well be. And that's all I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Rita?
A hard one. I can see both sides really. And, but I think the water issue is one of the really serious ones. Um, now they say that the property, uh, will be within the same, uh, footprint, but it will be larger.
Actually, no, it won't be in the same footprint. It will be conforming where, as the old property was not in the footprint, just, just so you're clear on that. The old one was on the property line.
Like I said, um, both sides have pretty good arguments.
Do you want to use Manny's word from before and say you're conflicted?
Yes. It was my word and Manny stole it.
That's true. It was yours. Yes, Andy.
If I could go back, I, uh, I'm sorry. Were you not finished, Rita?
Yep, I'm finished.
Okay, I, I just, there was one issue that, that I forgot to mention, and that's the easement. And I'm puzzled by how this easement can be. I mean, this easement was granted by, I don't know, but I'm assume, assume, I have to assume it's, uh, I don't know who, who's easement it is, but I don't see how you can sort of unilaterally change an easement.
You can't.
No, you can't.
It's a very simple answer to that.
The only question is, the only question is yeah, but the easement is not ours to, to adjudicate. That is a legal, legal question.
But the legal issue is pretty damn simple. You can't.
Okay.
Right.
So now I'm, I'll, I'll mute, I'll now mute myself.
Okay, we'll go, take, take it away.
I guess, Mike, I was a lawyer in New Hampshire for more years than I'd like to say, until I had the sense to retire. And, and up there, if you had a nonconforming lot in the sense it was too small, you were allowed to build on it so long as you complied with the setbacks and the septic and everything else. And I had numerous discussions in the five, six years I've been down here full, full-time with people. And they say, oh, no, not in Massachusetts. If you have an undersized lot, you do not have a matter of right to build on it. And so we have three Massachusetts attorneys here. And i- i- is that right? Or, uh,
Once you have three attorneys, you have three opinions.
I'll find out.
My, my thought on that, Mr. Sullivan, is that if you have a vacant lot, a vacant lot that was the predate zoning or that was lawful when it was created, that is subsequently rendered nonconforming by a change in the by law. It's always been vacant. You can build a single-family house, provided it means certain requirements, 5,000 square feet and 50 feet of frontage. That's under the zoning act.
Actually, actually though, Ms. Campus in Wellfleet, many of those lots were grandfathered. They were allowed to rebuild for, for a five-year period. And then after that, no.
Oh, okay. Well, um, I need to re-familiarize myself with
Yeah, okay.
I think in the distinction here though, is that you can't treat this lot as a vacant lot that has those protections because when it became vacant, it had, it had a house on it at one point, in other words. And the house wasn't destroyed before zoning came in. If the house was destroyed back in the 1800s and then zoning came in, yes, you'd, it'd be considered a vacant lot, but the house was destroyed in 2016. This was not a vacant lot back then. It was, it was, um, developed. And so that's the distinction there. And there's ample case law in Massachusetts that says you can't treat this as a vacant lot with those protections, at least under the zoning act. You have to treat it as, as it, as a developed lot. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay.
So
I mean, I mean, I'm with Andy on our town council's letter. Cause what concerns me is in section 5.1.5B, it says, uh, that we could grant this, uh, after, after determining that the alteration is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. But there is nothing existing. I mean, I have a good imagination. I could imagine lots all, all over town that have houses on it. But this hasn't had a house there for four and a half years. So there's nothing existing. So, uh, I, I disagree unless the town council wants to revise her opinion. I, 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 I think it's terribly unfair. But the statutes, the, the by law seems to me that I, I just don't agree with her opinion.
Okay. Mick?
Thank you. Um, I tend to agree with Trevor. I, I'm not a lawyer, but I've read the town council's opinion. Again, like Andy, I read it a half a dozen times and try and understand it. I do not agree with her. I agree with attorney campus's understanding of the by, of, of her opinion. And as regards the size of the house, um, we never found out when this was put into one lot. It was two lots. So we still haven't got the information when this was formed into one lot. And also it was a 560 square foot building. You want to build something substantially bigger, I wouldn't be in favor of that. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jan?
Well, I do agree with town council's opinion. So I, I, I think I'm the only one at this point, but I do definitely agree with her. Um, I had concerns about water and easement, but Sharon's pointed out that's not our value with, so we'll forget about that. Um, uh, as Mick just pointed out, we don't have any proof. And we asked you to provide this for us, that those two lots were actually legally combined. I mean, that has to be done, has to be, as, as far as I know, sent to the, you know, there has to be an opinion and it has to be sent to the registry of deeds if they were combined. And no one has given us that proof. I asked for that. Um, I'm tired. I'm getting a little, I'm not speaking very clearly. Anyway, uh, I would like to point out to my fellow board members that while the original house was 550 square feet, maybe of living space, it was on a 5,227 foot, square foot lot. However, if they've actually joined these two lots, it becomes a 15,226 square foot lot. I don't think the house that they want to put on it is, is out of place on that, uh, even though it is a, a nonconforming lot. But, you know, the lot supposedly is, has been combined, the lots. I guess that's it.
Okay. And I'm, I'm closer to you, Jan, in that I think that we can, uh, town council considers the, um, recon- considers reconstruction as part of an alteration. And that, um, it does seem that we haven't, that we have the ability to issue this special permit. I have a problem though with substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because, um, we're tripling. And I heard a new figure tonight. I mean, what I thought we had was a, an 1,800 square foot house. And then, um, the applicant said it's a 20, 25, uh, square foot house. Just one second, Mr. Thaler. 25 square house, which is five times the size of the original. So it's, it's sort of, um, I know that if the lots are combined, at least it's on a bigger lot. And I know that, you know, this one will be in fact meet the setbacks. But the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood stumbling block is the one I'm having trouble with because of the, um, because of the, uh, how big the house is. So, um, Ms. Young, did you want to speak to the combining? You have to unmute. She has
You have to unmute.
There you go. Okay.
Um, to the, uh, overall detriment, there are just two little points I want to add. And I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a geologist, but, um, to me, uh, two issues. One has to do with water, but not the, um, quality of the water, but the actual availability of water and the water pressure. You know, whether we could even continue to get the proper water pressure to live there. The other thing is the fact that, um, the original little house, the cottage, uh, was set up on, um, what do you call the stone? Cinder blocks. It wasn't into the ground. It wasn't even on the ground. It was sitting up on cinder blocks. Whereas the proposed new dwelling is going to have a basement, which is, in my mind, possibly, Richard Thaler has been working for years to maintain the, um, embankment in front of his house, which will also be in front of the new dwelling. And, um, I'm wondering, I'm wondering, I don't know this, if the building of a basement under such a large square footage house isn't going to both impact that bluff and also the water supply? Not the quality, but the supply. That's, that's it. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and I have Marion. Can you give us your whole name, please? You have to unmute.
Hi, I'm Marion Fontaine.
Okay.
I'm from the, I'm from the Mandel family. I just wanted to say that the two lots, they were asking if it was combined.
Yeah.
Town did combine that for tax purposes.
That's the same thing.
And also we were going to build a 1,300 square foot home plus a, um, studio behind it. And Richard had no problem with that and the town didn't have any problem with that. Uh, either did, uh, the McDonald's or, uh, the other neighbors. So this house is not that much larger. And, uh, we would just like to see this go through. I mean, we don't think we're being, uh, asking for anything that is really out of question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
But I asked that the lots were joined. I didn't catch it.
Yeah, she says that they were joined for tax purposes. Jan's going to speak to that. Jan, go ahead.
I'm not a lawyer either, but we've just had other, uh, people before us tonight and in the past. Joining them for tax purposes, as far as I know, is not the same thing as going to the planning board, uh, with the approval not required to join the lots and having them either agree with that or not, but, and then sending that off to, uh, if they are joined, to the barstool book, uh, registry of deeds. That it's not, as far as I know, that's not the same thing. Just having
Could I just, oh, could I just address that quickly? So there are two undersized lots there. So obviously they're held in common ownership. Those are treated as merged for zoning purposes. That's the terminology in all of the case law. And I would submit just as a condition of your, um, decision, you could easily condition it that the lots be, um, be combined and that a plan be recorded, um, with the registry of deeds. I think that would be an easy way to deal with it. And in terms of what's before you currently, it's perfectly appropriate for this, for this board to treat two undersized lots held in common ownership as merged for zoning purposes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to raise two things. Uh, you, you had indicated that you had some confusion earlier over the 1,800 versus the 2,550.
Yes.
Uh, and I believe I clearly indicated that the 1,800, it's about 1,700, uh, 1,793 square feet of footprint. That's the footprint of the building, uh, not the square footage of the building. Obviously the building has more than one story. Uh, so it's the 2,550 is the square foot of the building, but the footprint is 1,793, which is about 12% of the, uh, lot coverage, uh, in the, on that particular lot. I agree with, uh, what, uh, attorney Bealan has said. There is a doctrine of merger in Massachusetts, which if lots, undersized lots, nonconforming lots are commonly held, uh, the law merges those lots, uh, lots for zoning purposes. So I agree if she, if the board were inclined to require an approval not required plan or a perimeter plan to be filed, that's something that certainly could be conditioned as a part of the decision. You keep going back to 6.1.2, and I suspect that the three lawyers that are, that are on this call are not as familiar with the bylaws of the Town of Wellfleet as is town council. I suspect the town council has dealt with these bylaws in the past, is very familiar with the bylaws and how the bylaws should be interpreted. And I suspect that's why you go to town council for purposes of getting an opinion as to what that bylaw requires. There are three little words in that bylaw that everybody seems to want to ignore, and that bylaw, 6.1.2, says that the proposed structure is not larger than previous. Okay? So if the proposed structure is larger than previous, then that bylaw doesn't apply. It's simple as that. And I think town council was well aware of the fact, in fact, she states it in her letter, that the building was destroyed by fire. She's well aware that there was no building on the site. And oftentimes, buildings are voluntarily raised, replaced, and there's no building on the site when they're replaced. And she quite correctly points out the term replacement is part of the reconstruction and restoration asset forth in the bylaw. So if you're replacing something, replacing something that was there and is no longer there, in some cases, there may be a building there, but in other cases, there is no building there. And I hesitate to get into it because I know that the board has clearly indicated that they're not interested in it. But I pointed out to you in the last discussion that we had relative to the easement. The easement does not have a specific definition in terms of its meets and bounds. The easement says, "In the approximate location of vehicle tracks." Well, vehicle tracks can be moved around on a lot, do not move around on a lot. And the proposed relocation is within portions of that easement. Sometimes it varies from the easement that everybody wants to enforce here. But the easement does use the terms, "Approximate location of vehicle tracks." It's not defined specifically. It doesn't say 40 feet wide, 20 feet wide, 30 feet wide. So I suggest to the board that what we're proposing, even though it's not a consideration for the zoning board, the movement does, in various locations of that easement, is well within the ability of the applicant to do that. But again, as I say, that's outside the jurisdiction of this board, as the board has quite correctly pointed out. And I think, as my client has indicated earlier, at 2,550 square feet, this building on a much larger lot than the original building was situated on, is not inconsistent with other development that has taken place in this particular neighborhood. And I would urge the board to follow the advice of town council, follow the opinion of town council, that it so went out of its way to secure, because I believe that town council is quite correct in her interpretation of the zoning bylaw. And as I say, she probably knows a lot more about the zoning bylaw than I do, because she deals with it all the time.
Thank you. Okay. Will, I'm going back to you for a sec before the other.
Yeah, I mean, my, I mean, the, I'm going back to the question of substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And overall, I guess it's probably not, but for the landscaping plan, which I view as really obscene. I mean,
Will, that's not our jurisdiction, that's conscom.
Oh, but let me just say, yes, it is. Because if they're taking all the water out of the ground to irrigate, it looks like thousands of plants. I mean, I felt guilty watering my five marijuana plants over the summer, you know? And here, I look at this, I go, holy mackerel! What, this is so unwealthy, this is off the charts! I mean, I've got dirt in my yard. You know, if it doesn't grow in a drought, it doesn't grow and it dies. I don't waste water, and I've got tons of it. That's my comment.
All right, I've got two more hands. Marion? No, she's, her hand is down. And Mr. Bliss?
Yes, I'd like to address the, is it Will, the previous member of the board?
He's out of line.
I understand that, but since he brought it up, I feel like I need to clarify the issue, so it doesn't color this in the wrong direction. If he read the order of conditions, he would realize that, in the order of conditions, is a prohibition, prohibition of using any of our well water for watering the plants. We are, we are going to put in a gray water watering system with cisterns and pumps. And if that doesn't work, and the plants die, then we have to replace the plants. So no well water will be used to water plants. Period. End of story. Okay? So wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
I, I, I stand corrected then.
All right. Before I go back to the board for what now to discussion, is there anybody who has anything new to raise that we have not already discussed? Given the hour, I'd like to move on to the board. Mr. Taylor?
My final comment is, beyond us, think about the precedent you are setting for this town, vis a vis that bylaw. You will change the character. That bylaw was written, I believe, for a specific purpose. And you, this, this will be changing things dramatically. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Manny, I'm back to you. You don't have to vote on this one, so you can say whatever you want to.
I don't agree with the town council. And we can go through the whole thing again. And then I don't think the house would be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. I mean, I've built houses out there, big houses, like small houses. And this is not an overly oversized house. And it, I believe, meets the setbacks. I don't have the plan here.
Yes, it does. It meets all the setbacks.
So I think if we went with the town council's decision, I would, if I was voting, I would have to vote yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Trevor?
I stand by my original contention, and I have nothing new to add.
Okay. Again, you don't have to vote on this, you can say whatever you want to.
It is a big conflict. I don't feel I have, I can't go one way or the other.
Fair enough. Mick?
I stand by my original opinion.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, I, as do I, I don't agree with town council. But I believe that we must act in accordance with town council's advice. Should we do the opposite, we'd really be putting ourselves in trouble. However, I might suggest that we go back and perhaps discuss this with her. But short of that, I do not think that this would substantially change the character of what, you know, of the area, as I said before. There are all sorts of houses out there. And while this house is substantially bigger, there are houses that are of similar size right around it. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Will?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to town council, because I just, I think it's unfortunate that the applicant finds themselves tied into this restrictive bylaw. I'd certainly like to just discuss with her the word, word "existing," because that's what I'm hung up on. And I don't, if nothing's there for four and a half years, then how can it be existing? I just don't, I just can't, I can't get over that hurdle.
And Jan?
I do agree with town council, and I agree with Manny that it's, and Andy, it's, yes, it is a larger house. It's not outrageous. There's other houses nearby that are larger or as large.
And I too agree with town council, because I, I believe that what we're talking about here is a reconstruction. This is not, not a vacant lot. The neighborhood had every expectation that there would be a house on that lot. There has been a house on that lot for a great, for a very long time. And so they don't have a reasonable, it was not the same as living next to a vacant lot that has been unbuildable for many years, and then somebody suddenly says they're going to build on it. Here, you don't have that expectation. What happened was that the neighbors were too slow, and somehow or other, penalizing the neighbors financially for, for that slowness in a very strict, you know, interpretation of that 6.1.2 seems, seems wrong to me. But I hear, hear your concern. I don't think there's any, I'm not convinced that I see any point in going back to town council to argue the point. I mean, we are either, she has given us a way to grant this permit, and she's given us the option to deny it. And I think at this point, it's our turn. It's our job to decide. And so we either have to decide that we can't grant it because we don't agree with her interpretation of 6.1.2, we can't, or we agree with her interpretation, but we think the house is substantially more detrimental, and therefore we can't grant it. Or we feel it's not substantially more detrimental, and we can, we can grant it. But I don't think keeping everybody talking about this for another month is going to change anything.
That, that's fine with me. Let's put it to a vote.
Yeah, okay. So, it's a tricky one. I have a set of findings for approving, and I had last time a set of findings for, for turning down. I'm not sure quite how I do this.
Can I make a suggestion?
Of course.
Why don't we just take a poll of the board?
Okay.
And then, you know, you know, we can go from the, you can know which set of findings to draft findings to adopt.
That's right. Okay. All right. So Trevor?
At this point, I am not inclined to vote in favor of.
Okay. And what else is on the board? Mick?
At this point, I'm not inclined to vote in favor of.
Okay. All right. And Will?
I am not as well.
Okay. And Janet?
I am in favor.
And as am I. So we are, we are going to deny this permit. So this is where we are right now. Mr. Karen, I don't know. At this point, I think probably the simplest thing for us to do is to go ahead and deny the permit and let you take it from there, rather than having you come back unless you think there's something more, more benefit in continuing it.
No, Madam Chairman, I believe that town council made her position clear based upon her interpretation of the zoning bylaw. I still believe that the board is ignoring the precise language of 6.1.2, which addresses a building not larger than, which takes it out of 6.1.2. And therefore, 6.1.2 is not, not appropriate. The, one other thing that we had approached as part of the, as part of the arguments that were raised, were that even if 6.1.2 were to apply, that there is an equitable basis under 6.1.4 for the board to determine that the owners acted in good faith, and it was despite the good faith efforts that they were unable to meet the timeframes within 6.1.2, even though I clearly don't believe that that applies, nor does town council.
Right, right. Because, because it's not a, okay. All right, so then I need a motion to move to findings.
A moot.
Okay. And I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Will seconded. All right, this is an application under Wellfleet, I'll be punting a little bit here, so bear with me. Under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.1.5.1b, to reconstruct a single-family home on a nonconforming lot, the lot had been previously developed with a single-family home which was destroyed by fire in June 2016. The applicant proposes to replace a 554 square foot cottage with a two-story dwelling of 2,500 square foot. The lot is in, I'm sorry, what? What's the actual, what?
2520 square feet.
2520, thank you. The lot is in the R1 district, the lot is pre-existing nonconforming. Existing nonconformities are inadequate lot area, 15,226 square feet, where 30,000 square feet is required, inadequate frontage, 106.
No, I can't fix it, I've got other issues.
106.3 feet, where 135 feet are required. The previous dwelling was nonconforming in lot-sized frontage and setbacks. We're not sure what exactly. The proposed dwelling will conform to front, rear, and side setbacks. There were, I was trying to count them. There were, there were two, I think, appearances in opposition to the application. I'm not counting layers. I'm counting just the butters. Under 6.1.2, in the case of fire, a legally nonconforming structure may be rebuilt in substantially the form it had at the time of the destruction, if construction, reconstruction started within 12 months and completed within 24 months of the catastrophe. Construction of a replacement structure was neither commenced nor completed within the required time spans set forth therefore, and therefore, 6.1.2 does not apply. The board finds that the reconstruction has, that time limit has expired for reconstruction of this property. And the, and that's what I've got.
Sharon, can I make a point on 6.1.2?
Yeah.
The other reason it's not applicable here is because the applicant doesn't propose to rebuild in substantially, substantially the same way. So I'm in total agreement that 6.1.2 does not apply.
Then why are you, then why are we?
I think this is going to get appealed in court. So I think we ought to make very clear what our legal reasoning is.
Yeah, okay.
Because I also want to address 6.1.4, because that was just raised, and 6.1.5.
But if you're saying six point, but if you're saying 6.1.2 does not apply, then on what basis are we denying this application?
Because, because 6.1.4 doesn't apply, and 6.1.5 doesn't apply. So we're just not authorized to act.
All right. Okay.
You know, where are we at? Where, where are we, where are we authorized to grant a, 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 a special permit? That's one of the first issues I raised last That's one of the first issues I raised la, 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 last month.
Right, exactly.
I, I don't see where the authority is given to us to grant a special permit in this instance.
Okay, all right. So I do have on here is finding, okay, so then I, the final thing is construction of a replacement structure was neither commenced nor completed within the required timeframe set forth above and in set forth. And therefore, 6.1.2 does not apply. Wellfleet zoning bylaws 6.1.3 and 6.1.4 pertain to uses. They do not apply to this case.
Yeah, I agree with.
And then you want me to write something, you want me to add something about 6.1. So give me the wording on that one.
No, for 6.1. What?
6.1.5 alterations.
Yeah, yeah, 6.1.5 only applies to existing structures. And there hasn't been a structure on this property for four and a half years.
Yeah. All right. All right. So Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.1.5 applies to existing structures. Since there has been no structure on this property for four and a half years, 6.1.5 does not apply.
Right. And therefore, we have no jurisdiction to grant a special per, special permit.
All right. Okay. Wellfleet bylaw 6.1.5 applies to existing structures, since there has been no structure on this property for four and a half years. 6.1.5 does not apply. And then the final finding would be therefore, the board has no jurisdiction to grant a special permit.
Right.
Okay. Like those findings?
Sharon, could you just read off the numbers, all the numbers that you've addressed?
Okay, 6.1.2 in case of fire does not apply. 6.1.3 and 6.1.4 pertain to uses. They do not apply in this case. 6.1.5 applies to existing structures. Since there's been no structure on this property, et cetera.
Can I make one more suggestion?
Of course, of course.
Just, you know, since this is probably going to get appealed up, I think we owe the applicant it's, we, we've, we've talked about the substantially more detrimental issue.
Yeah, but if we're not, if we don't have jurisdiction, then we don't really have a reason to say
I guess you're right. I just feel bad for the, because if the applicant is successful on appeal, I hate to have him come back down here and have to go through this whole process again for us to decide whether it's substantially more detrimental. But if, if we're stuck with that, then I guess I, 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 I guess we were stuck with that. We never get to, to answer that, answer that question.
We can't answer that question if we don't think we have jurisdiction right now. But certainly, the applicant has heard the conversation.
Right.
So they know, they know the concerns that people have with the size and the combining of the lots and the need to have proof of that, et cetera. Okay.
All right.
I need a motion to accept the findings.
So moved.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and I need a oh, I have to poll the board, all in favor of accepting the findings. Will?
Aye.
Jan?
No.
You don't want to accept the findings either, okay.
I do not, I mean, if I, if I
Yeah, you say no, you say no. Yes, absolutely, you say no. Trevor?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
And Sharon? I will accept the findings. All right, and then based on that, I need a motion to deny the permit.
So moved.
Okay, and a second, okay. All in favor?
I, I am not catching anybody's name, and everybody's voice sounds
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, who, who moved that one? Will?
I, I did.
Will moved it, and I think the second was Mick?
Correct.
Yes, it was Mick, yes. Okay. What happens if we end up with a, just before I vote, what happens if we end up with a three to two vote?
Then the, the permit's denied?
Okay, good.
It has to be four to one.
It has to be four to one. Okay, good, all right. All right, so now I'm, we're voting on whether or not to deny the permit. Will?
I vote to deny the permit.
Yeah, Trevor?
Yes.
Mick?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
And Sharon? No. Okay.
Didn't accept the findings. I didn't know what to do.
That's all right. I've always been confused about that one. Okay, all right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I think that that concludes our public business. I do need the board to stay for a minute, because we just need to talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Why didn't we offer them to withdraw without prejudice?
They don't want to withdraw without prejudice, Chris. They're going to sue.
Yeah, and, and Chris, that's just the advice we don't want to do. Don't want to do. We don't tell people what to do.
They don't want to withdraw without prejudice. They're going to take it to court.
I'm not sure you can withdraw without prejudice once there's been a public hearing.
I, I don't know either.
I don't know either, yeah.
We've always let people do it.
Yeah, we have let people do it, but
Maybe, maybe up until it's a decision that's been made.
Oh, yeah, up until, you can't, once there's been a decision, so not, no.
Right.
But, but up until then, yeah.
Well, what you can do, you know, you can close the, the, the meeting.
Right.
And I used to do that in New Hampshire. I'd sit there and say, and I'd try, if I wanted to withdraw it, I'd hopefully say they'd open the meeting up again, you know, because you can't, once they close it, you can't say a word.
Can't say anything.
Open it, you say, ah, I withdraw.
Exactly. Okay, all right, board, my question for you, and then I think Chris also has minutes. Should we do minutes first, Chris?
Do the minutes first, please.
Yeah, let's do the minutes. So we have the minutes of the December meeting, which you got twice.
Yeah, I saw.
Do you, I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I, I, I shall move.
And Nick, will you second?
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor, Will?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Trevor?
Yes.
Rita?
Aye.
You have to say aye. You can't nod. Andy?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Manny, you can, you can accept them even though you weren't there. You just can't move them. Okay, the other thing I wanted to raise, and I don't know if it's, if it's something we need to worry about or not, because I don't know if we're seeing a pattern here. But we have seven cases plus Jeremy in February. And today we had it's 10 o'clock. And we had, we had two, three, five, we had five. Now, we do have to have all the ones, all the seven ones in in February, because they've all been given a certain date, and we can't back out on that, the seven plus Jeremy. But if we think we're going to have this kind of a volume, do you want to think about going to two meetings a month?
I don't have a problem with it.
Hi?
Yeah, no, I, I don't either.
Are we allowed to unilaterally make that decision, or does?
We made that decision unilaterally when we went to one meeting a month. So I'm thinking we can probably make it to go to two a month. And that maybe what we do is try Chris will keep me honest on this. We try to do try to schedule two for March and see if it, if it turns out we really need it. And then if, if we do, if it looks like things are coming in. Paul's been very good. Paul is doing a great job of explaining to applicants when he turns down something, he writes a letter with what they need to apply under and, and how to do that. So that's helping, but I think it's also helping us get more work. Whether that's a good thing or not, I don't know, but
It's okay. I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing.
I think it is too, yeah. So, Chris, can you, can we do that? Can we add another meeting in March?
Yes, I can get that posted on town website.
Yeah, and that way
typical people who come before us.
Yeah, and that way, and then we'll just see. And if, if it turns out we don't need it, we can go back to, to one a month, but for now, I think we, we're not Trevor said before, well, we're not driving anywhere, except for you, Chris. It's not like we have a long, you know, commute to get here, so.
I think it's a good idea because of the amount of property that's sold on Wellfleet that tends to always have an uptick in applications for the zoning.
Yeah, exactly. And the thing is, I think we get tired.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't want to hear seven cases in one night.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we're gonna do it, but I mean, there's only so much we can concentrate on before we start to
Yeah, I gotta leave for work at five in the morning, so I need to
Yes, exactly.
Sharon?
Yes.
I would I, I guess this is an executive session sort of situation. I don't know whether we are in executive.
No, we're not. So if we want to go to executive session, we have to turn off the recording.
All right, well, I don't want to do that tonight. It's late.
Okay.
But I do believe that there's a matter I would like to discuss in executive session.
Okay, very good.
We just have to figure out, we just have to figure out what the procedure is for that. Because there has to be a note, and, and I, I don't know what it is, but there's something.
You have to advertise it, and there's only 10, very specific reasons for which you can hold an executive session.
And I'm not sure it fits within, but I have a feeling it does.
I have done several for the Conservation Commission.
Right.
And I put down, you have to put a purpose for what your question is for. You could get with me, and then what we could do is if it's something you want to have sooner than later, we could do it at 6 o'clock or 6:30.
Yeah, that might be weird to do it.
If you are a 11th meeting. But I have, I have to post it on town website.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
All right.
The motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, that was Mick moved and Andy seconded.
Aye.
I'm not doing a roll call on that. Thank you for all your hard work.
Good night.
Good night, you too.
Good night.
All righty. Chris?
Yeah.
I will, I will get these to you in the morning. I thought I might be able to get them to you tonight.
Oh, no.
I'm tired. And, and this one needs some, you know, the, the Mandel Trust one needs some work, so I, I will futz around with that one. The affordable dwelling one is easy. And Janet will send you by email the ones from Stefani.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Good night.
Good night, good night. Drive safely. Oh, good, you're at home. I'm glad.
I'm able to do this back at home again.
Yes, okay. Thanks.
I'm passing us off. Good night.